Okay, welcome everybody. This is the May 16th, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting for MBD. Today, the public participation is offered by webinar. You can join the webinar by going to the mbdwater.org website and pulling up today's agenda. It has the Zoom link on there. Or you can call in 646-876-9923 to enter the webinar ID 86047205492. As a courtesy, Merrimack TV is recording this meeting and they will post it on their website at a later date. So we can call the meeting to order at 5:01 PM and we can all rise to state the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Alright, so we have three commissioners present here, myself, Wolf Von Sean, and John Lyons, and we have Paul McLaughlin is joining us by Zoom. Paul, can you state where you are and who's in the room or anything around you?
Yeah, my home at 326 Beboosick Lake Road, and it's just me and my daughters.
Great, thanks. Alright, first on the agenda is the Finance Human Resources Review with Michelle Holton. So we can start with the Analysis of Revenue and Expenditures Report.
With the month of April closing, we're at fiscal year. And all our main water revenues, except residential, which is coming in at 81.1%, are coming in above 83% of budget, resulting in overall revenue at 89% of budget. Our expense accounts are coming in at 70.9% of the budget. And our net ordinary income at this point is $807,000, which is $487,000 above the same time last year. And as we have mentioned in the last months, as we move into the particularly the last quarter of the fiscal year, the revenue expenses we monitor very closely, especially in regards to any anticipated price increases, which we have seen, seen this year. But we're we're coming into the last quarter in solid shape. And as I said, it'll just be monitoring things. Does anyone have any questions on any particular accounts? Why did the listing with the explanations that we've reviewed, which have followed through to this point? Are there any particular expense line items? Were you have question?
Questions on anything?
I don't, but I just want to say once again how helpful this cover sheet is. It really is exceptional to that you have that added because it just, it's the snapshot of everything and I usually go through the lines, but it does answer already a lot of the questions already had anyways, so.
I got a question. I might have asked this before. I don't remember, but just nothing related to anything, but the business managers budgeted salary. Where, where's the rest of that?
Account 50103 has 50%, and then account
Okay.
50207, which is water quality underfield salaries.
That makes sense then.
And for the fiscal year 23 budget, we decided to move 100% to admin.
Okay, so that's going to be combined going forward next year?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't quite sure where that other line item was.
You needed that out.
I knew there was another line item there, but I didn't know where it was, so. Okay.
And the only thing I had noted on the bank balances was that we hadn't received the statement yet, so we didn't have fees. And the interest posted there.
Right.
No other questions?
So new employees, just field people, do we still looking for an ops manager?
We're still looking for ops manager. We're looking for one field tech as well.
Put a bug in Dan Madison's ear, but I'm not sure if he contacted you or not.
I haven't received. Just one, a couple of.
I did see those. For look down, I did see them.
I would agree with that because I, I talked to somebody that knows him and I was told he's pretty close where he's at right now. You know, we'll see.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the financial incentives would be sufficient for him to come up here.
Right. Someone that John and I both know from a previous life.
Used to work for me.
Okay.
And on action items, there was one other piece of material that I included with finance section. We had announced about the vacation and safety policies at the end of employment. So that's the I was ready to back out.
Oh, yeah. Right after the finance break. What is this? It's just a summary of other municipalities, yeah.
Yep. I belong to an HR group and the government finance officers group. So we have the email listservs, try to send out the questions. What is your practice? What's your policies? And I grouped the responses. Things can be varied. I mean, we, there was even one community that they pay out vacation and they don't pay out the sick, but they let the people gift their sick to the other employees. So technically paying it. So it's at least pushing it down the line.
Please get taxed on that. Because they should.
I don't know what they're doing. But it really does vary. Several communities have started to grow up other in old policy user and make some modifications, but it really does. Out of these 14, everyone, the gamut across the board, vacation was definitely paid out. And sick varied from 100% to some at 100% and then over and above at a certain amount or some over and above. You may forego.
While they're passing notes, yeah, sorry.
And we do create reserves on the
Yes.
balance sheet for the
Yep, vacation is separate. We just updated at the end of fiscal year.
And we don't notify them at the end of the fiscal year. We carry them over into the following year and so the liability is on the books.
Yes.
And all liability, not just the current year, but all liability that is being owed to any employee.
Yeah, we do it to date and we also do the related taxes and the, what would be the related mandatory New Hampshire.
Okay.
And it's actually part of our audit.
So if five people were to quit tomorrow, we wouldn't be out $100,000.
No, we have it.
Well, we would be, but we have reserve for it, right? Okay, okay. And again, that's being carried forward at the, at the end of fiscal year into the following fiscal year.
Yes.
Okay, the balance at the point. Okay.
So as we read these descriptions on that sheet you're looking at, and it refers to we, is that you're speaking on behalf of MBDs, basically, this is what MBD does? Or is this for?
No, MBD, we, I hadn't put us on here. These were just different communities. 14 communities responded.
Each of these is a response from one community. So we is whoever that community, that municipality, right? It's not us, but that community.
And our policy has been the time earned to date for both vacation and sick are paid out. And there are some that follow suit. Some that have, as I said, have different limits, have a mix. Questions?
I don't think so.
Questions on that?
A lot of thoughts, but not questions. Yeah. I struggle with that.
Well, that's why I did put their responses, just so that you could actually see. I mean, there are some places that used to allow 20 weeks to accumulate it.
Right, but I mean, if you look at the numbers, it's four that do pay 100% of the sick timeout at the end of employment. All the other one, which are 10, are paying up to or less, right? So you can really not, well, not you, but one cannot really argue that everybody's doing it or that the majority is doing it. The majority is doing some of it.
Correct.
Or none of it.
And this was one thing.
Right, so.
So this was just
No, I understand, right.
I allowed for a few days response, just to give us a sense if it was, you know, absolutely not happening anywhere or if there was.
I think it's, I think it's safe to say that as many don't do it at all, as many do it that do 100% and half of them are doing less than 100%, right? In the ballpark, that's the message. So four do, four do 100%, three do none, and seven do up to 100. But not necessarily 100. So those
Up to so many hours, or there may be some have collective bargaining agreements and contracts, so it's really varied from different parties and different groups. Because this is communities in general, it wasn't fireworks.
Yeah, so it could include cities and municipalities, not just, obviously, there's not enough water districts.
Actually, there were no pure water districts that had responded, so. And mostly in the southern New Hampshire area.
Anything else for Michelle? Proceed.
Nothing for me.
Okay. So I guess we'll move to the regular session. Did you go through the bank account summary? We did that already, right?
The only item that was that we hadn't reconciled
That's right.
trustee of trust funds.
Okay. Alright, I guess we can move into the regular session. Like we're going to get an update from Underwood Engineers for ongoing projects. We're going to start first with, I believe, the Asset Management Project Level of Service. This will be the second reading of that.
Yes, so I did email you out and also hand it out to you. I remember literally a half an hour ago that you had asked for other town special statements. So I kind of threw this together with what I found online. Here, where we kind of were headed towards ours and where other people have gone with theirs. In terms of having read out the other items of level of service, did you guys come up with any other questions with some of the things we came up with? No? I'm going to hand it off to Ms. Margaret, who is going to get the more in-depth on what she's been up to.
Maybe briefly about the mission statement, yes. What is the next step? Us approving it or is it just informational or do we need to prove it?
This will be informational in terms of, I guess, the next meeting will be for you guys to either stay with what we've got, modify what we've got, and vote on it.
I just wanted to add, I kind of like what Manchester did with the fire protection. I think a lot of people don't realize that our water is, yeah. You know, it's not just about drinking water. It's also about having enough reserves that we can take care of dwellings and well, not we firefighters, obviously. So, but that's just me.
Any other suggestions?
I kind of like ours. It's nice and short and to the point. That, you know, the fire protection is a good thing that people don't normally think about, but
Put in irrigation.
Yeah, right?
Oh goodness.
Yeah, so that's the thing. You could, you could kind of go down the list of.
Yeah, I'm just kidding. We don't want to put irrigation, we should save it.
No, I'm fine. Go ahead and proceed.
Okay, Margaret.
Alright. I will share my screen here. I have a PowerPoint. Oh, it says host disabled participant screen sharing.
She's changing it now.
Alright, I hope you are all looking at a PowerPoint.
Yes.
Yep.
Good. Just trying to find the slideshow.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is. Alright. So for the past year, I have been working on an asset management program for you, the Merrimack Village District. This was funded with a 20,000 DES Water Asset Management Grant and a 20,000 match from you. You've been working on asset management for quite a while. I know that Tom Page from Underwood completed a Water Asset Management Program in 2014. Since then, you've purchased Elements XS, which is your computerized maintenance management system software. And that is what you use to track your work orders. And you also created your asset inventory files in ArcGIS. The goals of asset management are to understand the condition of your water infrastructure, identify and correct current deficiencies, anticipate future needs, provide a basis to estimate financial resources required to maintain rehabilitate and replace assets as necessary. Continue to build on the asset management program in the future. Asset management is a never-ending project. Oops. I have a stray logo in the middle of this one, sorry. Um. Underwood's scope on this particular asset management project focused on creating vertical asset inventories to include your newly constructed facilities. You recently did some upgrades at the Wells 4 and 5 Treatment Plant, the Turkey Hill Booster Pump Station, Wells 2 and 9, and Wells 7 and 8. You were looking to develop a basis to create a 10-year capital improvement program. And complete work started by staff to update and complete the asset inventory. And some of the tasks related to that were generating unique asset IDs, update and streamline domains. That's kind of ArcGIS lingo for dropdown lists. Just makes data entry easier and more efficient, makes it easier to retrieve data later as well. And just ensure that field names and types were consistent across all the inventory files so that you can coordinate and create reports. The components of asset management are the vision statement and mission statement, the level of service, asset inventory and condition assessment, critical assets and priority projects, financial planning in the short term, financial planning in the long term, implementation and communication plan, and I added recommendations and next steps. The vision statement and mission statement was revised as part of this asset management effort. Kristen, I hope I have the latest ones up here.
Yep.
What's that?
Yes, you do. Sorry for my potentially adding something about fire protection.
Oh, okay, good. Well, that's a good idea. The mission statement is to provide the best quality, quantity, and cost-conscious water that meets or exceeds standards from source to tap. And the vision statement is by maintaining the highest of standards in infrastructure and maintenance of Merrimack's water delivery system. The level of service is a set of specific goals for the operation, maintenance, and performance, oops, of the water delivery system. And these can be thought of in terms of SMART goals, which are evaluated and reevaluated regularly. SMART stands for Specific, Measurable, Achievable, Relevant, and Timely.
Excuse me?
Sorry?
Why are we referring to sewer on the?
That is
Okay.
A typo. That was a mistake on my part.
Okay.
Sorry. I apologize. So MBD's specific level of service goals were categorized under asset preservation, condition, conservation, compliance, and enforcement, health, safety, and security, and service quality and cost. Some of the more specific goals under those categories were to monitor the work order system and provide training for staff so that you can get the most out of that. And the work order system is the Elements XS software. Map system expansions in a timely manner. Staff goes out and collects points. You know, for instance, if there's a new subdivision that has water service to it, they're collecting the service valves, the mainline valves, the hydrants. And the idea is to get those mapped and into the inventory so that they can be tracked. Maintain inspection and maintenance schedule. This is for flushing mains, inspecting fire hydrants, exercising valves, all those routine activities you do to keep your system in good working order. Conservation, compliance, and enforcement includes educating the customers on water conservation, staying current on regulatory changes. And health, safety, and security includes regular testing and inspections, monitoring and evaluation of the chemicals you're using. Educate customers on winter safety and work with your IT provider to ensure the security of MBD's data and your customers' data. Service quality and cost. Maintain a high level of customer service by providing employee training and reviewing employee job performance and goals. Maintain low response time by improving Elements XS work order system. Service quality and cost also includes, includes optimizing water rates to provide the best possible service and avoiding excess revenue. Determining the true cost of service. Operating costs should include all inspections and maintenance that's necessary on a timely basis. And it includes revenue for necessary capital projects. And you want to educate your customers on the true cost of service and the basis for water rates. We put the asset inventory together mostly based on MBD's existing GIS files for horizontal assets. We also started the vertical asset inventory with a spreadsheet that was started by your staff. We filled that out and added the newer facilities that are under construction that have been completed recently or maybe still under construction. We also use construction drawings and record drawings for the vertical assets. You may not realize this, but we estimated that the full replacement value of your water infrastructure is about $370 million. And that's primarily your distribution system. Your well facilities and treatment facilities are the next costlyish, followed by the storage tanks and booster pump stations.
Lake Road.
Sorry?
Love what's in there.
Lake Road is
Yeah.
Oh, Lake Road Tank.
We call it Parker Tank, but that's okay.
Oh.
It's, it's known by both.
Okay.
And well, six has a value even though it's decommissioned?
It's not decommissioned.
It's not?
Just, it's just been shut down.
But shut down because of contamination?
Yes.
Yeah.
It still has a value?
Still a building there. Yeah, it's still an asset.
Oh, there's a building still there. Okay, okay.
We can put it as I think I have a field in there, active or inactive. So if you don't want to, want it to show up on reports, you can filter it out based on that field. But it's good to have it there if it's still exists. One of the big tasks associated with the asset management program is prioritizing assets and ranking them. So we do that by assigning a probability of failure score versus an impact of failure score. Probability of failure is based on condition, age, capacity. In the event, in the event that we don't have any numeric condition information, we fall back on age, and that's what we did here. Impact of failure or consequence of failure depends on how many customers might be affected if the asset fails. The type of customer. If it's a hospital or school, rather than, say, one single family home, that would have a higher impact. If there's a potential impact on public health, that would also increase the impact. So this is a map of your water system by impact of failure. So the red pipes have the highest impact, and these are the ones that are fed directly by the water sources or they're directly connected to store, active storage tanks or pumping facilities. And then the orange are the next level down. The green might serve, you know, good-sized neighborhoods or multiple streets, or they might connect neighborhoods. And the blue and the purple are have the lowest impact. They might affect a few homes or in some cases, dead-end streets. Like I said earlier, the probability of failure, we like to base that on condition if we have enough information to kind of make a ranking scale and assign a numerical score. In this case, we didn't, so we fell back on age or really remaining useful life. So a lot of your assets are very long-lived. You have some pipes out there that will probably last 75, 80 years or more. So in that case, a very low probability of failure means that they have a remaining useful life of 50 years. And a very high probability of failure means that they've already exceeded their estimated useful life. In the future, I know it was Dave's intention when he was here to come up with a way to quantify condition information and assign a numeric condition score. So one way of looking at this is to plot criticality, which is probability of failure versus impact of failure. I have this graphic here which sort of illustrates those different categories. The risk score is the probability of failure times the impact of failure. So if you have an asset up here with an impact of failure of five and a probability of failure of five, that would have a risk score of 25. Financial planning in the short term is about evaluating the system and setting goals. Determine the staff, equipment, and services needed to meet those goals. Develop a capital improvement program and determine the capital contribution that'll be needed to carry out that plan. Evaluate revenue needs and set rates accordingly. In the long term, as part of this asset management program, we projected your capital needs out over the long term, 100 years, because you have some very long-lived assets. And we do that because when you're setting rates, you want to keep in mind that planning for significant future needs begins today. So based on the information I have, the estimated financial need over the next 10 years is about $9.7 million. And on this slide, I'm summarizing what came out of the table that I put together based on the data I have. And so some of the, I'm just highlighting some of the biggest needs here. I didn't include everything. But hydrants and valves installed in the 60s and 70s, they have about a 50-year useful life. And there, according to my information, there's approximately 312 hydrants and 950 valves that need replacing. Water mains installed in the 1950s. Looks like there's about 1,300 linear feet, and those water mains are approaching the end of their useful life as well. The granulated, granular activated carbon filter media at the PFAS treatment facilities, that has an estimated three-year useful life. And so that will need to be replaced three times within 10 years. So that's going to be a significant expense. Well 6 yard piping and valves was installed in the early 1980s. Some of that will be approaching the end of its useful life. Now, of course, if you're not using well 6 that often, there may not be a need to do this replacement, but it's on the list and it's brought to your attention. Well 7 and 8, the RTU antenna devices and wiring has an estimated useful life of five years, and I believe that was installed in 2016. So that might be coming due as well. And this is what that 100-year projection looks like. I bet you're thinking that $9.7 million sounded like a lot of money, but it only gets bigger from there. Now, this might look a little bit scary. It's based on full replacement value. I think as you start identifying these projects and stepping into them, you'll find that you know, a repair might suffice rather than a full replacement. So I think these numbers are going to come down when you actually get to the planning stage of your projects. So the implementation of your asset management system is pretty complex. You have a lot of components. We focused on this part, the asset inventories, which are in ArcGIS software. You are currently using ArcMap. And right, yeah, 10.6. And the reason for that, I believe, is because the work orders were set up that way, and so that's how the two softwares best communicate. But there is some discussion with Esri to upgrade to ArcGIS Pro. Now, the files we created for you will work in either. They will work in ArcMap or ArcGIS Pro. The tables created in ArcGIS Pro will link to the work orders by unique asset ID. So each fire hydrant, for instance, has a unique asset ID, and that can be cross-reference with the work orders through that unique ID. We also created some Python tools so that when you update the asset inventory files, you can easily run some calculations and combine the asset inventories into a table, export it to Excel, and then you can query that Excel spreadsheet to extract the information you need. And then use that as the basis for your CIP. Some of the other things that are going on right now, the current project, aside from what we're doing, is that Elements is working with staff to link Elements with the UMS billing software, and that's how the meters are going to be tracked. The biggest communication priority for this project was prioritizing and ranking assets to create a 10-year CIP. Some communication goals included in the level of service were to determine the true cost of service and educate customers on the true cost of service and the basis for rates. And of course, since asset management never ends, you have some ongoing tasks. One is to continue working with Elements Access and UMS to establish communication between the two. And that's how you'll track meters. Work with Elements Access to establish communication with updated ArcGIS asset inventory files. And ensure that existing work order templates are operating correctly. Work with Esri to update the geometric network in ArcMap to a utility network in ArcGIS Pro. And continue to review, refine, and update the inventory files. And I think that's all I've got. Any questions?
Any questions? I had a question about the, you had calculated the assets of all of the different infrastructure. How was that actually calculated? That's not a replacement cost. That's a previously installed cost that's depreciated or something, or what is it?
No, that's full replacement in $2022, right?
All right, good, good. And you had mentioned one of those slides that showed the kind of triangular-looking graph with the $10 million estimate over the next 10 years.
Right.
And then it goes higher from there.
Right.
Right. But then you did mention that that's probably going to come down. Is there, is there a way to? I mean, so we're looking at those numbers, but we're saying they're probably not real?
Well, I wouldn't say they're not real. What we're trying to do here is surface the assets that might need attention. As you build on your asset management program and start especially collecting more information about condition, and I don't want to say you don't collect information about condition, you do. I think the trick is to develop kind of a numeric scale so that you can figure out how to rank them. But I think once you start doing that, you'll find that some assets that technically may have exceeded their estimated useful life are still serviceable, and they don't need to be replaced right away. Or you might find that you know, in planning the project that, say, a repair will suffice, and you don't need full replacement. So I do expect those numbers to come down. What I'm trying to do here is just is provide you with a conservative planning level estimate.
Yeah, I was just wondering if something can be changed to try to make it more accurate at the onset instead of and I don't know what that is.
Yeah, I know.
The numbers that she uses, she's basing it on age. It really is an estimate until we unfortunately go down and look at every single asset and it's a matter of digging down. So when she talks about condition, they're varied. We don't really know.
Right.
So she's given us worst-case scenario with all of those numbers.
So it's a little challenging to try to actually predict what we might need to raise revenues for by using this program still.
Let me jump in there a little bit because what we've done in the past to do that, Dawn, when Margaret mentioned the first asset management programs or reports that were done in 2014, almost 10 years ago, we did the same thing, and the numbers were as large. And what we did for budgeting and rate setting was said, look, okay, look, those are real. And you know, the best we have is to what we know today. But we'll assume that we only need to budget maybe half of that going forward because you'll either get grants or you'll get developer contributions, or you'll find an alternative strategy to repair it, as Margaret said. So you look on the capital improvements plan that you get issued every year. There's a number, there's a line item that was going to support asset renewal since almost 10 years ago. And those numbers is how, that's where the adjustment was made, Dawn. So these numbers that are in the report are real, but how you budgeted for that, you use some judgment as to what makes sense going forward. And that's what we did 10 years ago when we started doing it.
And I think that target number we're looking at was like, what was it, 500 or 700,000, I think?
Yep, it was 500,000 a year. We set aside towards asset renewal for the distribution system and 140,000 for the vertical assets, adding up to 740. And that represented what we thought was 50% of the true replacement value if you kind of projected it, you know, for the next 50 years or something.
Okay. All right, that helps a little bit.
Two quick questions. Those numbers, do they include inflation?
I did not include inflation. Those are all in $2022. And the reason I don't is because at this point, you're wanting to figure out which, you're wanting to use this to figure out which projects you're going to do first. So you want to be comparing apples to apples. And then the other thing is when you go to plan the project, you're not, you might be paying as you go. You might have a loan. You might get some grant money. So at that point, you really know how you're going to fund the project and what sort of escalation factors you're going to need to include.
Okay, but it means that the numbers at the tail end of that graph could be a good 30% higher than looking at them now.
Sure, but the expectation is to kind of regenerate this every year or so, you know, periodically anyway, so that hopefully it'll change over time as you get more accurate information.
Okay, and just a quick comment for those that may or may not watch this meeting. The GAC lifetime estimates are way off in that study, way, way, way off. We're looking at replacement of four months, five months, six months if we're lucky.
We're getting
a year.
We're getting a year and a half right now.
Well, depending on which PFAS we look at, right?
Depends on what your criteria for replacement is.
Right, so I just want to make that statement because I don't want anybody to lean on that statement
Right.
at a later time and say, I thought it's only going to cost us that much. That's not what it's going to be.
But on that note
And I'm sorry, and it doesn't include the other plans yet either.
Right.
There's only covered wells four and five.
No, we did include 2, 9, and 7, 8.
Oh, you did. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
I thought I read four and five only.
So that would be, I wonder if that would be accurate enough to use for, you know, there's been some discussion about, we even talked about maybe in the future, having a warrant article for our customers to vote on whether they want to change the media sooner at the first break-in so that we have non-detect PFAS in the drinking water, or we're only going to change the media when the regulated PFAS compounds indicate that we need it to be changed. Those two different lifespans of the media, if we can go into that program and just change the year, say, like Wolf was saying, maybe it's eight months if we want to change it out at first breakthrough. And maybe we're, looks like we're probably going to get close to two years if we're just looking at regulated compounds. And the difference in those two cost scenarios would be what the extra cost to the customers would be. Do you think it's, you think it's accurate enough to use it that way?
I think so. I mean, the idea is that as you go along and you're gathering more information and you have more experience, you're going to be updating this information.
Yeah.
And it's going to be more accurate.
Right, because right now, we're just kind of guessing and, you know, the cost of carbon, the cost of all of that is probably gyrating like everything else is in the world right now, so.
Right, everything right now is so strange. Right, everything right now is so strange. I think, you know, three years from now or five years from now, we're going to look back and we're going to see this bubble. And we'll, we'll probably kind of come back down to where we should be cost wise. But if you're spending money right now, everything is escalated.
Yeah, yeah. All right, I'm good. You guys have anything else or?
We won't have to take from it at all.
Well, that's it. It's very intriguing to look at it that way. It's a good, good presentation. Thanks for walking us down that road.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great. All right, I guess we're good.
As I said, the next steps is if you've got any changes I can work with, trying to come up with something with fire protection and throw it at you. And see if we like it or we go back to the original or as I said, you stick with what we've got in terms of what's been in place for eight years or so. So it's entirely up to you guys. This is, the whole gamut of this is more to just take a look at what you've got.
Right.
And go from there. It's not a matter that we don't have to change it.
Right, I think it's fine. Somebody might look at the word exceeds on the statement when you're talking about standards. Usually if you get a, if you exceed a standard, that's a bad thing because you're over the standard. But I understand what this is saying is it's, it's exceeding standards. It's, the water is better than the standards. But it's kind of a, I was trying to come up with a synonym for exceeds, but I don't know if you can think about that. I just, and it's probably not worth, I think everybody understands the implication of it. It's just kind of a funny word that, you know, you, you get a violation for exceeding the standard.
Right.
You get a ticket for exceeding the limit.
But other than that, I think it's great. It's, and even if you want to leave it that way, I'm fine with it. I think everybody understands what it means.
So some of the things that you have also mentioned that just as an FYI is that we, Elements and UMS are pretty much fully communicating now. Elements has been upgraded. We have a couple of little hiccups here and there, but we're working through them. And our next step is to go to Pro. And then working through those hiccups. So along with what we did with all that, we have had three software upgrades in the midst of all this, which has been a lot of fun. Along with the fact that once Margaret hands this over to us is coming up with a plan on designating a person, multiple people, the time to keep this up to date. So that it doesn't fall to the wayside, similar to what 2014's report did. You know, this is a lot of information and valuable information. So it's collectively coming up with a plan on how do we keep it up to date?
So the staff will be able to go in and populate new assets and assign criteria to those and?
Right, coming up with a standard of what is our metrics for failure and stuff? Do we stick with what you got? Do we come up with our own?
Right.
Same with coming up with plans as main lines break. Well, what's the pipe look like? How does that get reported back to whoever's maintaining that data, coming up with plans of all of that?
So they can use pipe break information to kind of give us a better insight of?
What's the test of it look like around it?
Yeah, that's intriguing.
Also on that same note with the new system, just pulled up the stats today. For the IMVD portal, we have 227 users in two weeks. We have 56 people signed up for EVO. Thirty for credit or debit card recurring payments and five for AC checking or saving. So the word's getting out there. We also have a mailing that comes out with the bills.
Oh, good.
Starting this month, those bills, we have to sign off, send side that's out there.
Good. All right.
I do have one question. Oh, as far as DES is concerned, with the asset management grant, what, what do they need from us? Is there a, once it's completed, do they need a board vote to approve the whole plan? Then do it? Is it just?
No, I need to complete the deliverables. So that means I need to complete the report. I need to get them the files that I use to draft the report and create all those tables and the spreadsheet. And I need to send those, I need to make sure that DES has those. And then we also need to send in a reimbursement request, which we've already drafted. And for this particular grant, Underwood, Underwood's contract was the only thing in the grant. You weren't purchasing any equipment or software under this. So we just need to complete that reimbursement request and get that into DES and that'll wrap it up.
All right, good.
I'm going to leave this for you guys. If you could peek out before you leave.
Sure.
Any other questions for me?
I don't think so. We're good. Are y'all set?
I'm all set.
Thanks.
Good evening.
Thank you, thank you. All right, great. So we're moving on. Keith, I assume you're taking over on the next items of well seven and eight, two and nine. Penachuck cost of service study. And then a couple of amendments to some engineering service requests.
Yep, so I will take it from here and Peter couldn't make it tonight. He would normally give you an update on seven and eight.
Right.
Do you want any screen sharing?
I don't need to unless something comes up. But maybe you could prep me for that or queue me up just in case. But he just gave me a couple of things. I'll give you real quick on seven, eight. The facility did go online April 27th. I assume most of you are aware of that. So that seven and eight, now the iron is under control. And it is producing, producing water and PFAS reduction. So, so as of April 27th, that is back on track. And punch list items is where that project's at. So they're working on the punch list and in the field. So that was, that was encouraging. That was good. Well, two. The well, the work at the well building itself, I think this was a concern, is going to be postponed until the end of the summer so that that well will be available to you during the high demand periods through the summer. And then it's, they're scheduled to start getting into that well building right around Labor Day. And, and the plant would be estimated to be online in October-ish. Peter's words were October-ish. The latest schedule indicates that the well nine VFDs are not scheduled to arrive till December due to buy chain issues. So that may be one piece that'll be a little bit delayed. And then the work onsite continues and materials arriving roughly as scheduled. A little bit longer than anticipated, but and the one major issue, I think they're waiting on is some butterfly valves. So I'm reading from some notes that he gave me on that. I don't think there was any too alarming or new things. It's, I think those are things they've been talking about for the, for a while.
So that sounds like we're still able to operate one or two of those wells, wells two or nine, even if we don't have the VFDs?
Yeah, I think that's what they're trying to do there so that it's available to you. Certainly until they get into the, the station this summer, they're going to not do any demo work so that the existing station's available to you.
Yeah.
Well, nine, we wouldn't be able to run. Well, two, we could.
Yeah. I, as long as we keep well two the way it is now and not.
Exactly. Yeah, it was that whole thing with changing out, getting in there and cheap.
You still have to get approval for nine, right?
Yeah. Right. Sorry. So when, when you said that, when Pete said that we could, I guess the plant would be done by October-ish? That's no, not with well nine probably. Correct, because we don't have the VFDs.
Right. But October-ish, I believe he's targeting, you know, that we'd start seeing the PFAS treatment online.
All right, so we'll still be able to put the well two without the VFD through the treatment system?
Right.
All right. Yeah, just make sure that that's what he anticipated saying there. So those two dates are conflicting. I just wanted to make sure.
We're not going to get the well two VFD until, I think August was the estimated ship date or arrival.
So what VFD did you just say there, Keith? Was it nine or well two and nine?
The well nine VFD is scheduled for December. He didn't, he didn't comment on the well two VFD other than to say, we're not going to get into the well two building until Labor Day. And that he could, they, they would anticipate that the treatment plant would be able to go online October-ish. So I suspect what he meant there, that well two would be able to be fed through the facility in, by October. Well, nine would be delayed for another couple few months because of the VFD.
Okay, yeah, that makes more sense.
But the whole reason for a new VFD at well two is to be able to push through the vessels, correct? So I don't think it would go through.
Yeah, because it would need, we need a whole new pump in there too.
Yeah.
I'll have to get, I'll have to get that.
Over the end of, end of October. Or so.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I'll, he'll, he may have to clarify more for you next week, next time when you meet.
Right.
But he did say the treatment plant would be able to go online October-ish. So, you know, October, November, but I think more clarification will be available next meeting.
So maybe he means that the, the VFD and the well, the new well pump will be raised for well two before it will be for well nine.
Oh, no, absolutely. Yeah, well, mine is that that's going to take place, I mean, we're not going to begin December.
Yeah.
And I think, I think contractually, it's the end of October, correct, for substantial?
I'd have to look it up, Ron.
That's why we were saying September, Labor Day, we'll shut down. It would still give them a month to cut contractually to get this work done.
Yeah. When is our Pennachuck rate run out?
By October.
It is October. It was for a year?
Yeah, it's the 20th.
Yeah, okay.
For a year for what we're needing.
Well, that's the thing. We probably won't need. So if well nine is not up and running. But I'd like to make sure well two is because we're probably going to need well two. We shut Pennachuck off, right? Definitely going to need well.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, certainly after September, you usually are in pretty good shape, but
Yeah.
But well two would be important to you to, to know to have it. But I, I, now you know who knows more about the treatment plant stuff. Peter, not me, but I'm doing my best. Well, we'll have to clarify that for you guys for the next meeting and I'll make sure Pete does.
Okay.
But I do know more about the, the cost of service study and the amendment. So for, for the cost of service study, which was the next thing on the agenda. We have been talking to Pennachuck for a while now as a result of the water supply option study to, to, to look at what wholesale arrangements would, would look like either at Daniel Webster Highway or Route 101A. And there's been, you invested in getting the cost of service work done and they delivered that a while ago. And we now have sort of honed in, I think, on what might be a reasonable approach based on the initial information to say, okay, like if we go to a wholesale arrangement, let's do it at the 250 guaranteed take from them at a maximum of 500,000, which buys you a few years to have some comfort and supply at a reasonable rate. And then gives us the time to pursue the other onsite options that we've been talking about, whether they, the, the artificial recharge or a new well. So based on those discussions, we did go back to Pennachuck and said, okay, it looks like this may be the direction. There's no commitments or anything, but we did refine the ask of Pennachuck. And said, all right, we've got the, we've got the pump station at 101A. But what if we were to look at a shorter term duration, three year contract with a options for renewal or options for termination at those intervals? And keep it at 250,000 guaranteed take, which means you would have to buy 250,000 gallons of water or pay for it, whether you used it or not, with to a maximum of 500,000 gallons a day. And they came back with some revised numbers and they're really not, they didn't revise that much. Tweaked them a little bit. I didn't think substantially, but what did change was some things that were more outside your control and that is Milford. We understand that Milford had originally asked for a substantial arrangement with Pennachuck, which was going to require some significant improvements. We had been talking about pump station and some pipe replacement. Well, it turns out that Milford has reduced their ask from Pennachuck. And I, as I understand it, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's a done deal. So they've dropped instead of two MGD down to like point nine or something like that. The bottom line is it freed up capacity for you, for Meramec in their existing infrastructure. So this ask that's in front of them now is under what their existing facilities can provide. Meaning there was no capital, no more capital investment to do this at 101A. There was when we, when Milford was hot, was asking for water, more water, and we were asking for a little bit more. So that's, that's good news. So the rates that, that they came back with or that they had shared is really, that's all there is. There is no capital investment. Is, is based on what they're telling us now. So what we did do, and this may be something I want to share my screen with. And I did send this to Ron. But we calculated what the cost to you would be in increments of 50,000 gallons. So if you did pursue the 101A option and said, we don't, and we enter into this agreement and we take zero water, how much is it going to cost me every year? And if you take 50,000 gallons a day, how much is it going to cost me every year? And then we went up to a million gallons. So we put that arrangement in, in this table to show you how that works. Now, I don't know if you have that in front of you or if you'd like me to share the screen, but I can, I can share the screen maybe anyway.
Yeah, you can put it up there.
Okay. See if it's giving me the permission to do it. Okay, here it goes. So this is, this is Route 101A. Now, the rate tables you had seen before were just at a fixed number, 250,000 gallons a day, which was this line. What we did is say, well, if you use less or you use more, how much is it? There's a lot here, but the two highlighted columns are what you want to see. For 101A, if you use zero water and you enter into this agreement, 250, you're paying 300,000 dollars a year for that. Because of the, because you get, you committed to taking 250,000, even though you didn't use it. So then you can, so everything up to 250,000 costs you 300,000 a year, 296. If you use 250,000 gallons in the year, you're, you're, you're paying this rate 243, which is what they had on the previous tables. And if you use more, you know, the rate actually gets better because you have this fixed annual charge. So you, if you go down this route, we want to use 250,000 gallons a day minimum. And it's going to cost us 300,000, whether we use that or not. And you're allowed to use more. The agreement would be up to 500,000, I think, is what we were talking about, which would be 400,000 dollars a year for that water. They did say, even though the agreement, they guarantee you water at half a million gallons, they're guaranteeing you. That's what this arrangement would be. You're buying it, committing to it, they're committing to it. Which is why it's different than what you have now. You just have an agreement that's You just have an agreement that's on a retail rate, if the water's available, they sell it to you, if it's not, they don't have to. So you're, with this agreement, you would be getting a commitment of up to half a million gallons a day, max day. So that's the cost, because there was no capital cost associated with it, if Daniel Webster has similar numbers to it, but the difference with Daniel Webster Highway connection is we'd have to build the pump station and the transmission pipe to get it there, so there's a capital investment associated with this, with this side of the project, where there isn't with the 101A.
And I saw a long email chain, uh, that we were copied with, um, primarily between you and, and Pennachuck. Did, did they say anything in there about answering the water wheeling question we had, and, and then if we, um, so if we did this agreement for the 250,000 on average day, up to half a million gallon peak, if we actually needed more than the half a million gallon and we, we needed up to the million gallons that the pump station will deliver, what would happen to that extra 500,000 gallons a day? Would that be the retail rate, or? I don't know if, if, if Don or anybody answered that.
Well, I think, I, he basically said, we will accommodate for that, that if, if, you know, that would happen outside, we would put it into the agreement to establish or memorialize what that was, but he's like before, when there's a, if there's the inability to charge, they're going to wheel it, he said in his email, and it's in there, there's a, was a lot of email back and forth, that that would, that would carry through like we've done before and wheel it through, and it wouldn't be a disadvantage to you. And so, that's, that's how he was proposing to handle it, he also said that regardless of that, if you needed more water still and that station could pump a million gallons, they would, they would give it to you if it's there. And you can see what it would cost you by looking at this table, but they don't have to, they're not committed to, but if it's there, they'll sell it to you, they'll sell it to you. And you know, the more you use under this scenario, actually, the cheaper the water is.
Yeah. So it didn't sound like anybody was talking about that retail rate, like we're paying now under any of these circumstances, right?
No, this is a much better rate than what you would be paying now.
Right.
You are committing to water, though, that's the difference.
Right.
But, but it's at a much better rate.
So there's another way to look at that, I just want to bring up, because we're talking about a fixed variable cost here at nine two two nine, right? And the all-in cost basically just reflects that upfront charge, you know, we're over a larger amount of water. But the upfront charge is a sunk cost, you pay it anyways. So while the, the cost per cubic foot will look smaller, you're still paying the money. And it's still going to cost you more.
If we don't use any water at all, we're still going to pay.
Yeah. I guess my point is on the higher levels, all these rates for all-in look much lower than the 250, for example. But it's, it's something you have to be aware of, is that you're paying point nine two two nine, no matter how much water you use.
Yeah.
And you're paying 50,000 or whatever is up front. And so using more is going to cost you more.
Right.
Even if the upfront charge looks smaller on a blended rate. You're maximizing that upfront charge. For sure.
Right. So it's just diluting the annual charge, and that's why the rate comes down then, right? The, the?
That's my assessment, am I wrong Keith?
Well, that's right, um, this is what you're going to, this is the fixed charge, you're going to get a bill quarterly probably on this at 183,000 divided by four, so quarterly, I think they bill quarterly. So that's your pain, and then you're paying this volumetric charge, whether you use it or not, up to 250, so yes, this 296 is the total cost you're committing to as a minimum, and you divide that by the water, and that's where you get the rates, so yes, the, you have it right. You have it right. But it's, but your point is, you know, we're, 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 this is an added cost to you, there, we've got to remember why we're, we're looking at this too, and that is because of the the max days that we're struggling with, and this is a way to handle those max days with surety. We've handled the max days in the past with the retail connection at 101A, and we found in June 2020 that it wasn't there when we needed it, and they, we had no recourse, it just wasn't, they didn't have to give it to you, they had some, you know, whatever reasons they had, I know there were several. We couldn't get the water, and we had that, we had those, we had to go into conservation, more conservation measures than we're used to. So the concept here was, and this can be, I, we asked about the three-year agreement, yep, you can, no problem, three-year is the minimum that they can do, but they will do a three-year agreement, and then you can walk away or continue. Up to you. This gets you by.
I don't mean to, to indicate that it's a bad thing, it's just, I don't think we should be gung ho horses to use as much as possible. If we have to, and we do, we maximize that charge.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely want to make sure we use that 250,000 gallons a day on average, because we're paying for it one way or the other.
Do we have an idea of, um, how much water we use from Pennachuck during the drought conditions, and does that fall within the 250 to 500?
We do know, I'd have to look it up, Jill, I know we have that, what we used during that time.
Curious during the drought conditions that we're going to hit the hardest, so if that fell within the 250 to 500,000 range, that would make sense, if it was lower, it was, you know, just 200 gallons a day for that short period of time, does it even make sense for us to have these upfront charges instead of just paying a, you know, retail, regular retail rate and not getting upfront charge?
Sure, there's a break even point.
Yeah.
Yeah, and remember too, though, where, and you could probably look, you can look at different guaranteed takes or maximums, you certainly could, they gave us different ones. But the 500,000 gallons, um, max day that we're proposing here is what is in the, the planning work that we've been doing for you, is the, the water we need, so, so if you look at the planning reports, we are looking for half a million gallons a day. So, um, and you know, you're going to be hearing some discussions late, later on tonight on, you know, on the you know, development agreements and, and new connections, and that's, and that's partly why we came up with the half a million as a target number. Anything less than that is your, your, you know, maybe you're, 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 you're under what, what it is we've targeted for needed water.
So this probably does not include, what's the, um, meter fees at like 30 3,000 something?
Yeah, no, it probably doesn't, this is just water rate.
Yeah.
There'd be some other charges on top of that.
Right. So that's probably another 36 grand just for the meter, but?
It could be, yeah, monthly, it has gone up.
Yeah.
Trying to, and I don't remember what they.
I'll have to, yeah, I'll have to double check, is that question didn't come up specifically? Unless you had confirmed that, Ron, maybe you did.
I didn't, but it was nothing, I'm just assuming because we made the, set up the agreement for the, uh, special rate, it was not mentioned, and then it was billed.
I'll, I'll double, I'll ask him specifically.
One other thing I'm just wondering is, um, when Don came in, he did his thorough presentation a couple of months ago, he had mentioned that at some point in time, I think he said when we went to renew, we would have to pay for another cost of service study. So the, like, when does the one we already paid for expire?
Yeah, um, he did say something about that, but it wasn't, you don't, once you sign an agreement for three years, it's you're, you're, you're locked in.
Yeah.
I, I think he said that the renewals after that were locked in for a period or something, I, there was a sunset on that rate, and I just, but it wasn't, it wasn't annual. It was, it would be written into the agreement.
I would just add to the, I mean, if we're looking to, to meet our peak demands, three to 400,000 dollars a year, it's a pretty efficient and cheap way to do it.
Yeah, I think so. Well, I think, um, what's going to help is when, um, and you're going to probably talk about the next ESRs that you have, is when you're going to try to normalize these costs against all the other source options that you've already done and update all of that. I think then we'll be able to compare the cost of buying this water versus the cost of developing other sources. We'll kind of look at it as a cost per gallon that way. Or cost per gallon per day, I guess. You know what I mean?
I do, I feel like you gave us that chart that kind of went through that, though.
You did, so that, this is going to be updated on that chart, because that chart, we're kind of just guessing at the.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, it's a perfect lead in, John, ESR 54, which is one of the, uh,
Keith, before you continue, um, what, what you just said, John, I, I agree with in general. But if we look at it from, like, let's say a, a 30-year standpoint, right? We almost have, like, let's say we, we get 30 to 50 years out of a filtration plant and a new well, right? We almost need to compare it with that, like, like accumulate the cost over 30 or 50 years and compute with that. What time?
I can't do that in my head.
No, me neither, but one advantage that I see is it comes with no additional labor costs, right? No operating cost, it's, we pay the bill and the wa- the water's flowing, right?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, so that's one advantage, so, so we can keep the overhead low.
Yeah.
So, sorry Keith.
No, that's okay.
So it looks like we got Ken, can you join in, honestly, just, did you just join in?
Yes, uh, hello. I can.
Great to have you. Do you want to let us know where, where you're zooming in from?
I'm zooming from my home, uh, 19 Jake's Lane in Meramec.
All right, great, let the records show that, um, Ken, um, zoomed in here at, joined the meeting at 6:20 PM.
Vice Chair, Ken Ayers.
Vice Chair, Ken Ayers. That's got a good ring to it.
You kind of showed some respect.
Smile too much, Wolf, jeez.
All right, um, yeah, so I, I can roll right into ESR 54 then, because that's exactly what we were proposing to do there, there were several cost tables in the water supply options plus those normalized charts that we're, you were just referencing, that we had to make certain assumptions because we didn't have a cost of service study back, back then with Pennachuck. So now that we do, um, this ESR would allow us to update those tables and cost opinions reflecting to a little bit more maybe of current industry construction cost increases as well. So ESR 54 is for 7,000, which helps, which contin- continues our role to help working with Pennachuck on the cost of service, but also identif- updates five charts and tables, which are the cost opinions, the normalized charts that you were talking about, and some of the tables, cost tables, which summarize the capital and the O and M. And so what we would propose to do is if you authorize this, is just pull those tables out of the report, update them all based on current knowledge, and then reissue them in a supplemental tech memorandum that could just be inserted into that report, that just reflects what we know today in terms of dollars and cents. And so that would, I think, inform you, um, better now on how these, this option looks against the other options, at least from the cost point of view. The other thing we did do in here, and I think Wolf brought it up last time, was you know, it's not all about the cost, there's other things here that are important to us, if we need the water, we need the water. So that we would put together a sort of a matrix of cost of decision points and you know, help at least qualitatively, if not quantitatively, give you a, um, a decision matrix on the, a few options, so you can use that to help decide too. For example, you know, is it going to meet the PFAS standards that we want? You know, the score, score options one way, is it going to provide the water reliably that we want? Is it more cost effective and a few other things, so that, that we did put, put in there as well. So that's a 7,000 dollar, um, added fee to the previous work if you authorize it.
Okay. So would that include, um, there was a couple of things we talked about, uh, one, Mitchell Woods, and I don't remember if Jamie replied, but we had talked about if we could use that existing eight-inch well as the permanent well and maybe not have to put in a larger, you know, whatever, 12 by 24 well screen or whatever. And, and I don't remember what the cost study you, you had done on, I think it was for a, a brand new well out there, a larger well. But then there was some talk about if we're only going to be doing 300 gallons a minute or whatever we're limited to, we may be able to get that out of the existing eight-inch well that's there, and we could save a lot of money on having to develop a new well, so I don't know if you want to just reach out to Jamie and make sure you get the right cost on that. Because I think we'd like to know if, if that's a possibility, if we can forego the cost of a new well there. So yeah, if you want to just make that note.
I will, and we are, in the ESR, we will be updating at least all the viable options in, so all, you know, we're not just updating those two or three.
Right.
You'll get them all refreshed.
And I think we can delete the, um, Wilson Hill Road investigation, right?
Yep.
Because that didn't pan out, so that's probably not going to be a valid source to pursue. Okay. So, um, anybody have any other questions on this, um, this first ESR 54?
Yeah, I was, I was just thinking about this, Keith, what we just had discussed here a minute ago, based on John's comment, and then my addition to it. How do we, how do we incorporate the long-term effects and the amortization in the different, you know, variants, for example, the you know, the, the wholesale agreement is, is, it doesn't really requir- require like a, like a large investment initially upfront, but it has annual repeating you know, whatever that base fee's name was, I forgot, I'm sorry. And, and then the other projects or the other solutions oftentimes have a, a substantial investments ahead of, investment ahead of time that really needs to be looked at from a, from a lifecycle standpoint, based, based on how long we think that asset can be used until it needs replaced, right? How, how do we factor that into the cost study? I, I don't remember that.
Because you're looking at 20 years, right, uh, in the cost study?
Yes, we did, and, and we did factor that in there. If I can pull it up, I can share it, but we did do a present worth analysis, which is take, basically taking the annual O and M, bringing it forward to today's dollars, fluent dollars, to consider the, the variant O and M costs and to normal, that's part of what we did in terms of normalizing things, so a higher upfront capital project that had very little O and M may rank better than a project that has lower capital, but a higher O and M, so yes, we are doing that, the table that John mentioned has that built into it in one of the columns.
If, when you did that, did you consider a point of diminishing returns at all? I don't know how close to capacity we are in this building or the distribution building or things like that, if we're, if we're growing, are we close to needing more space or?
Well, um, not, I mean, we probably are a little bit yeah, are you saying like depreciation and some things like that, or?
No, I'm saying if we develop enough new source that we need more people and more equipment, do we have the capacity currently to house those things?
Yeah, um, we probably did not identify labor specifically in these scenarios, so we didn't get down into that finite of a calculation other than we did, if we thought it was going to cre- increase O and M, we added a kind of an allowance for it, like I'm looking right here at artificial recharge as one of the options we looked at. We added a 50,000 dollar O and M costs, just kind of as a, you know, engineer's judgment that, and maybe that's labor, maybe some of that's electricity, heat, power, lights. So we did it kind of on a, on a higher level, but we did try to do some of that, but I didn't say it's going to, you're going to need another, you know, half an operator in there.
Yeah, I think it's something to consider, you know, quality. Yeah, I think it's something to consider, you know, qualitatively, and Ron and Jill probably know better than many of us where we're at with that.
Well, so I I don't think we'd be that uh. Well, there could be a tipping point. It's a good point, right? There could be a tipping point where 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 if we put in three different plans, right, all of a sudden what we have doesn't work anymore, right? And we have to expand HQ. Command piece.
Probably already there now.
It's a good point.
Well, we can take a little closer look at that as we update costs and see if there's some fine tuning on that that we can do.
So I I have a really just a quick question. So the increase here is uh seven thousand dollars over originally forty-nine thousand nine hundred. Forty-nine thousand nine hundred was the was that the total of the original cost study or was there another ESR prior to that?
I think that covered the water supply option study.
I think we're we're only, I'm frankly a little bit surprised about the cost here for seven thousand dollars to just basically refresh a couple of things and add a couple of decision, you know, points, decision characteristics or criteria, I should say.
Yeah.
And well, you know, on a on a fifty thousand dollar original ESR turning turning into fifty-seven thousand.
Yeah. Well, it's not, it's higher than you would expect for one reason. And it's it's listed on the bottom of the pay on the ESR. The work also includes previous and ongoing assistance with the Pennachuck Cost of Service Study. I've actually spent more money than putting in here because of all those meetings we've had dealing with the co- I've never had a contract for that. So good catch. Well, some of this is catching up on that. I put three thousand dollars in there to catch up on some of that work and to give me a little bit more time to help in another meeting. So it's really four thousand dollars is the refresh.
Don't don't they normally pay you separately for meeting attendance and things like that?
We don't. I don't send you a bill for the meetings. Underwood's policy is really we try to keep those wrapped up into the contract that we're working on.
Yeah, okay. I mean, that explains this, but I'm not sure if I like that. I rather would like to see you paid for actual meetings that you attend instead of like, you know, shopping. I don't want to say hiding, but you know what I mean, right? It it just makes it less transparent. Maybe something to consider for the future. I mean, I mean, that explanation to me makes sense because I know you had a lot of meetings, so I'm okay with that. But I just found the seven thousand over the fifty thousand to just refresh a couple of numbers, a little bit excessive. But to me, that that explains it sufficiently, so appreciate that.
So we vote in on each one.
Yeah, so someone want to make a motion to uh accept the amendment number two to ESR number fifty-four for an additional seven thousand dollars. Uh the fee goes from forty-nine thousand nine hundred to fifty-six thousand nine hundred.
I would make that motion.
And the funds, the funds are coming from operating budget? Or from development of new or from from engineer. Okay.
That's ESR number fifty-four, amendment number two from Underwood Engineering dated May eleven, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Right. Motion by John, second by Wolf. Anybody have any other questions or comments on that? If not, um do you have anything? No, I thought somebody said so.
No, I I would say I'm ready to vote.
All right, good. Uh so we'll we'll do um all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then we'll do a roll call for um for Ken and Paul. So Ken, you can go first.
Uh Ken Air says aye.
And Paul? All right. No abstentions, no oppositions, so that's five zero zero in favor.
The other ESR I have in front of you, um I think is fairly straightforward and easy. It's whether you just want to do it or not want to do it. We have been trending the data for you on the treatment facilities, both the raw water PFAS, but more importantly, trending the the bed volumes used for the carbon as well as tracking the um all the the detectable PFAS in the raw raw water and the finished water and all the ports in between. So we've been doing so far four and five and seven, eight, as it's been just now becoming online. So we really haven't started those trend charts. But um we're going to, this is for another, was one year for eight thousand dollars for one and a half wells, because um now we're gonna, we're proposing to do three wells for another year for eight thousand dollars. So now that all the trend charts are set up, it's a little bit easier, even though we're almost tripling the work. Um so this ESR will get you through Ju- July twenty twenty-three um trend charts for the G A G A C facilities for all three wells when they're up and running and um the raw water for eight thousand dollars.
I'll make the short motion to move forward with uh ESR sixty, amendment one dated five eleven, twenty twenty-two. For the purpose purpose of trending of PFAS water quality monitoring and the actual monitoring, right? One of eight thousand dollars come from the operating budget, correct?
Yes.
Engineer, right?
So that motion was made by Wolf, second by John. Um I just had a question on uh it might might be just the way I'm reading this, but on uh what page is this? Page two of three. Um and under task one is one, two, three. Uh what's that? One, two, three, four, five, six bullets down? It just says we have assumed months of monthly monitoring. Is that supposed to just say we have assumed monthly monitoring evaluation? Or is there, I'm not sure if there was a number of months you wanted to put in there?
It probably was supposed to say twelve months of monthly evaluation, but
Yeah.
I think um I think at the bottom, it's it's really this is covering July twenty twenty-two to July twenty twenty-three. Um I think if we just, I in the final version, if you're comfortable, we have assumed monthly monitoring, so I can take the words months of out of that.
Yeah, that's what I thought was most likely the case. I just wanted to make sure.
I'll take that out and and when I sign a signature, sign a signature, and refresh signature to Ron. Or Ron, you can just, we can line it out and initial it to that, be all right.
Yeah, it's probably easiest. All right, so that um ESR has has amended. So that's um motion by Wolf, second by John. I guess we're, if anybody else have any questions, if not, we can um put to a vote. All those in favor of this amendment, ESR signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh Ken, how do you vote?
A vote yes.
And Paul?
Vote aye.
Great. So no extensions, no oppositions. That carries five zero zero.
That's all I had unless you had any other questions with me.
I don't have anything. Anybody else have anything for um?
I I I I do have a quick comment. So so you you mentioned something early that it is um uh Underwood policy to to mix those meetings into into the ESR, so right into the contracts. And I understand that keeps it simple too, but when we have such an excessive, you know, backlog, I kind of would like to recommend that if you notice that it's piling up, that you maybe alert the board, right? And maybe propose that we have a separate ESR that covers that. I kind of don't like that after the fact kind of adjustment of pricing and then, you know, mixing it together. I'm not saying anything bad's going on by any means. I, you know, you guys are doing a tremendous job and are very, you know, uh careful with with our money. But I I just think it's cleaner, you know, instead of instead of just coming after the fact within ESR that covers it. And and I recognize that those discussions have been part of that cost study. I recognize that. But it's just not really in the scope of that ESR, right? Now, maybe I'm missing and 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 you can correct me if I do. Uh maybe I'm missing that you mentioned this in here somewhere, right, as a bullet point, and I and I overread that. And then I say corrected and maybe that's better.
Yeah, the words, it is in there, the words I, yeah, what I, the words I said in there, it's on the bottom of page one of that ESR. Work also includes previous and ongoing assistance with the Pennachuck Cost to Service Study. This includes review of documents, meetings, and other technical assistance.
Yeah. It says that now that I know what you what you meant, but I'm not sure if I caught it like that. Okay, so maybe something to consider. I don't know.
Right.
I kind of like to have that clarity, like granularity a little bit, but then then trying to mix it in after the fact.
Well, and and we'll do it however you want. That's fine. I we ing- I ingrain my staff here that you know, we don't bill for anything unless we have a written contract for.
Hmm.
Period. So when we go into meetings, then I don't want you guys to be surprised either. So it's just it, but what we have done in the past, Wolf here, and Ron has set us up with this, where things kind of, because we do go off on tangents sometimes, so you're right. Sometimes you have, we have to look back, but we have had technical assistance agreements in place that are kind of on call or as needed. So if you ask us to do something, we can, we put a five thousand dollar number to it. It's not a big number. And if it's not, it's nothing, we we don't have a scope for. You can use that. Um that's, but then I have, then I have a contract, right? Then I have an agreement with you upfront.
I guess I guess my point is you you're saying, and fair enough, I understand your predicament. You you're saying uh to your staff, don't do anything we don't have a contract for, right? And 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 don't bill for it. But here we are talking about it after the fact, right? And I I understand hindsight is twenty twenty, but maybe as you noticed that there was ongoing conversations with Penny Chuck, maybe it would be a good idea to at least give you and the board a heads up and saying, hey, by the way, it seems like we're accumulating something here. It might be a good idea to talk about some kind of contingency ESR or something like that. Just just a recommendation.
Well, no, and that's fair. We should have, we should have done that when we started seeing those costs. And and to be honest with you, Wolf, I had a draft ESR back in January that sat on my desk and I should have brought it forward you, so you're spot on.
No problem, no problem at all.
Would it make sense as well on ESRs going forward? Actually have um allotted, you know, an estimated time that you, you know, you know, the estimated twenty hours for meetings and this and that.
Yeah, sometimes we do identify that we have five budgeted and we we try to take various staff data or put an allowance in there. We have two thousand dollars budgeted for meetings for the next four months, you know, some or six months, done various things.
Just to kind of give us something to look at, saying, you know, as we're going through, you know, the different meetings that we must be getting close to this.
Yeah. All right, well, we'll work on a good way to do that, um because I understand what you're saying and what you're asking for.
And once more, I'm I'm not feeling, you know, blindsided on anything. I just feel it would be more transparent to do it that way. I I know you guys are careful with your time and every time you guys are working on our stuff is very valuable, so I'm I'm not concerned about it, but it might be a little bit keener.
Well, I I kind of look at it different too than the way you're doing it now. We'll be able to look back and know all of the work that was associated with this particular scope of work. Whereas if you have a separate meeting, you know, ESR, we'll be asking you for meetings here and there on this, on on a on multiple tasks that are not going to be captured for those specific tasks, though, you know? So you're you're, when you look back and say, how much did that whole thing cost? Oh, it's cost the ESR was for this much. Oh, yeah, but we had a meeting on it here and a meeting on it here and a meeting on it there. And those aren't in this ESR, so that's.
I I guess my point is, had I not asked, we wouldn't know that this is now covered, right? And um and I recognize it may have just been forgotten and 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 I recognize it was written in here, but it wasn't necessarily like, you know, it wasn't jumping out at me, and maybe it's just me, but it didn't, right? And and in the end, we're not really approved to pay something after the fact, at least not if it's planable, right? So we really need to go out and 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 approve something beforehand usually, so.
That's a good point, X.
But instead of like to Don's point, instead of being a separate, like an engineering um ESR, we could adjust the ESR if we currently, you know, ESR fifty-four, get adjusted to accommodate that extra that's extra hour.
Yeah, and almost like a contingency, um.
Yeah.
All right, enough. Sorry about that.
All right, so uh we can move on. Um let's see where we are here. Uh looks like we are on item number two, Board of Commissioners to meet with Kevin Walker flatly regarding the water supply phase two of Gilbert Crossing. So it looks like we got Kevin on here and um we do, probably Tom might want to get answer some questions or whatnot on here too. Okay. Well, Tom, if you want to uh fill us in on your um letter that's in the packet here, I think.
Okay. Well, we had a, we had a work session with the the board recently and talked about kind of updating our approach on the um evaluating developments and supply capacity. And the updated letter we sent um uh regarding the Flatley development reflects that. And you know, the basic tweaks um are, uh we uh uh updated the supply capacity to uh reflect more your your actual utilization. And we um also to make this work and accommodate demands, we show the Pennachuck is uh connection as uh as at least an interim source to to show you can meet those uh max day potential max day demands, um including uh potential developments um that have been uh been approved to date or on the table, such as Flatley's uh second phase here. Um with respect to um the proposed Flatley development, um the the in this latest letter, we've updated it to remove the additional demands uh for irrigation. So what would be shown now would just be um uh the uh average uh pro- proposed design average demands, which we think are conservative, you know, based on uh the first phase. To date, we show that the actual water demands that Flatley's been using have been less than their, what's been approved under their um, under the uh the first phase agreement there. And um the any irrigation that they do would have to, it would have to be within that um allowance uh for for usage. And you know, based on their past performance, I think they can do that. So that that helps bring the number, the demands down a little bit there. And uh and then the uh uh charge, the uh the system development charge reflects that. Um so that's basically the updates, updates we made to uh um to the letter. And I can, I mean, I can run through it in a little bit more detail, but it's pretty much the same tables that we we uh looked at in the work session recently. Any other, any other questions? And maybe Kevin wants to weigh it, weigh in on um what, where he's at specifically with the development and what he what he's asking for right now.
How you doing? I told you, I want to make sure you recognize before I start speaking. Kevin Walker from the John Flatley Company. Uh I didn't, I haven't seen that uh that last letter that uh Tom was just talking about. But if it's similar to what we have in front of us in the February letter, um I've I have no issues with it. The only, the only thing I I'll bring it up one just one more time is you know, and then the initial letter from February twenty-second uh from Underwood, uh they recognize a thirty-five hundred gallon per day average daily flow limit for the five apartment buildings we had, which is seven thousand gallons per day per building, average daily flow flow limit. And our average daily flows actual for the five buildings is about thirty, it's about half that, it's about thirty-six hundred gallons a day. Um and that's with the irrigation. So I I think I, and this is up to the board, obviously, the board obviously has final say. But with our initial uh uh development fee that we submitted for the apartments, which was thirty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty bucks per building. And we've, we've, we've more than covered that with the, if we even add adding these two additional buildings, we've we've covered it by by that plus plus quite a bit more. So I don't know if the board can take that into account. I mean, again, our our actual average daily flow limit for the five buildings is just under eighteen thousand gallons. For the five buildings is just under 18,000 gallons a day. And we were allotted 35,000 gallons a day. So it's, it's just about a little, little over half. So these two extra buildings are definitely not going to, uh. Trip that 35,000 gallon a day average. Um, as far as the high bay building, I'm fine with those numbers altogether. I have no issue whatsoever. I know we did talk last time about how we're going to connect all this. And I think, uh, Tom had a page in his previous report that showed the phasing on how this is going to get done. Um, and I can tell you that we're in the process right now of putting a, uh, conceptual design together for the planning board. For the area between our flex buildings, uh, which we discussed last time in February. And, uh, the apartments. So once we get that laid out, we'll actually be able to show the actual alignment of the entire water line. Uh, through the site, so at least a connection from one end of DW. At the site to the other end of the site at DW. So we'll be able to provide that loop for you guys. Once, uh, once we get that approved by planning board, which hopefully will be this year.
Can I ask you a quick question on the average demand before we get too far away from it?
Sure.
Yeah, when you calculated that, um, you know, from the time you started calculating it. How quickly did the vacancy rate get up to 100% within those first, I don't know, few months or whatever it took?
So I, I basically, I took, I took the, uh. Jill actually had sent me some numbers. I, I took, I think a couple of buildings and I took, uh, the whole year. I went through the whole year. And, uh, figured out the, the average flow throughout the year and did it that way. Um, and those were full buildings. Those were 100% full buildings that the calculations came out of.
Tom, those, those numbers are the same numbers we would use for any property, right? And when we look at the. Average and and peak demands. Any other developer that or or builder that would, well, developer that would come in front of us with a similar product, project would, um. They, they, the study would be subject to the same numbers, to the same assumptions, correct?
Yeah, those are, those are numbers we use for apartments, uh, for single family homes. They would be higher, but I think we've used. Use the same numbers for other apartments, uh, to be good, be consistent. Um, so, so we try to acknowledge that an apartment user is going to use, use much less water. Uh, and but that still gives some conservatism and you know, as Kevin says, the actual usage has been, has been, uh, less on average than, than the, um. Then the values that were improved in the, in the, um, in the first phase agreement, but, uh, that gives you a little, you know, buffer there for. For, you know, for future use there. So, so, um, so you make sure you want, you do want to stay under that and.
Yeah, the other thing is, I think, you know, even though these are all average numbers, we're always going to be more concerned with. Peak numbers and. So I, I think it's a little bit more conservative and more applicable to look at, you know, the design numbers here, even though they're double the actual use because. And I know maybe you haven't used the peak amount, but there's no way for us to tell if you would. There, there's no way for us to know if things would ever change in the future.
And there's, there's always a peak, you know, every, every, you know. Typically people get up in the morning and shower, they come home at night and shower, and that's where you'll see the peak usage. You'll see, you'll see no usage. You'll see the usage of zero between midnight and 6:00 AM or something along those lines. Um, so I'm not certainly not saying, hey, use the numbers between noon and six. I'm not saying. Use between 6:00 and 8:00 AM or or 6:00 and 8:00 PM. It, you know, it's an average and that's, and basically that's what your, 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 uh, your flows and your fees are based on. The average use, which takes into account, obviously there's a, there's a peak flow time somewhere in those average uses. Nobody's using 145 gallons a day. You know, like I said, at two in the morning and no one's using 145 gallons a day at peak time, but it's definitely going to be more than. You know, 145 gallons a day divided by 24, it's, it's going to be more than that number. At the peak morning and the peak afternoon, just like it's going to be zero between midnight and six.
Right. And you're, you are averaging numbers through all 20, I mean, 12 months of the year, basically?
Yes, all 12, all 12 months.
Right. So that's what I mean, you know, when, if there was peak usage out there and, you know, I don't know, maybe there's going to be. More irrigation someday, there's filling a swimming pool or I don't know what happens, but we have all of our wells. The reason we have all the wells we have is to deliver the peak flows. If we only had to provide level usage through the whole year. You know, half of our sources we could get rid of. But the system development charge goes to pay for the whole system. Not just the amount of water, the amount of sources we're using for, for the average day, you know, so. I'm, I'm, I'm going to feel more comfortable sticking with this, the numbers in this analysis and. And it's consistent with everybody else as far as I know. So. That's my, that's my feeling on, on the, these, you know, system development charges to be. Consistent with what Underwood is represented here, um, in what calculations they've made for other. Similar users in the past, I guess.
So again, you know, the, the apartments, the apartments, we didn't have, you know, we hadn't had any built yet. So we had to take, we had to use a number. That basically was published in a book. When, that's what we did and I agreed to that 100% because we had nothing to go on. Well, now we, now we actually have something concrete to go on, which is, you know, and honestly, if it were higher, I would expect you guys to be saying. Hey, guess what? Your numbers are higher. You know, we're, we're going to have to bump you a little bit and I wouldn't have an argument for you. I mean, again, we were using more than, than what was allotted. I get it, you know, how much more do I owe you? Um, and if this number was 80% of what we're, what we had there. You know, I'm not going to make a beef about it, but it's, it's literally, it's, you know, 51.3%. It's its half.
Right, bottom average throughout the year, right? So what, what, what was the worst month at 100% occupancy? How close are we to the numbers that we have here as the average number?
Um, I don't have it in front of me, but I can tell you it was not 145 gallons a day average per, per unit.
And so when you look at page four, right, table two, we have, uh, 13 properties here and. I can assume that out of those 13 about. 10 or 11 are family properties, right? No, nine, nine of them are, I'm sorry, apartments, right? The other ones are single family homes. So if I hear that we have used the same. calculation.
I was just going to say.
On all of those other properties, then I mean.
It's the same, we're using that 100 and 140, 155 gallons a day.
Per unit.
Per unit. It's consistent with what we're, how we're looking at other properties coming in. We'd have to change it for everybody.
So that's going to have a disservice to everyone along the way we came through.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we use for our calculations to come up with an S and C.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, I believe we looked at in the earlier, earlier phase, we looked at some other apartments in Merrimack and saw. You know, usage in that range and so.
They wanted, were they one and two bedroom or were they two and three bed?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can't remember all, all the details, Kevin, but I know we. It, it, it's, um, it's about, it's about treating everyone the same way, whether you use that water or not, you have the potential to. And that's, and that's really what it's about.
Right.
So they've also got a potential to use a lot more than that too.
Yeah.
Which we're not obviously promote, promoting or, or, you know, advertising anybody to use all the water you can, because we're, obviously that's not what we're about, but, um.
Now these.
At some point we can, and it doesn't necessarily have to be on this project. If you guys are. Adamant on this, uh. You know, this, uh, 7,000 gallon a day. Flow for 48 unit buildings and if it's something I can do to change it, there's nothing I can do to change it. Uh, but also, you know, I always like to toss out here too, and I know I probably mentioned it before. Cause we are doing a full few more things out there that. Really aren't necessarily required. And I, I know that you, you, you as a board can or cannot give us water and I understand that, but. Just taking that part out of it, you know, we're, we're running a 12 inch main through the site. You know, is it, is it necessary really to do that for, for the site? Probably not. Do we have to, we're running across a culvert on our own site. We're, we're connecting at both ends. We're, we're running. A lot more water line on the site than what's really needed to run this site. And we're doing it. Obviously out of respect for MVD and in the board, uh, as well as the water system as a whole, because you know. I get it. I'm an engineer. I, I, I get the whole nine yards of, you know, wanting a secondary, uh, connection or loop around. But you're going to have a lot of developers that aren't able or aren't willing to do it and when we are, so we're just looking for maybe some sort of. I'm not going to say a break, but some sort of, uh. Acknowledgement that, that, you know, maybe we're doing a little bit more than you'll find from a typical, uh, developer. And see what we can do with the fees as such, because you know, it was just, just the, I mean, we all know about, uh, the cost of. You know, whether it's plastic or or cast iron or whatever, whatever kind of water line, it's going to be through the roof, especially with, uh. Construction involved. We're just looking for not a handout of any sorts whatsoever, but, uh. Anything the board thinks that the board might be willing to do, you know, would be, would be thankful for, that's all.
So I wouldn't want to make any changes to these calculations because that opens up a barn door of future discussions with a similar project. So we, but, but for Old Blood Road, didn't we make a concession on that line?
And we have, so to come up with the numbers, you'd want to be consistent.
Right.
And again, when, you know, for the improvements we're asking for on top of that, that's where the negotiations.
That's right, right.
So absolutely, we could. Let's put a number there and, and reduce that off of what's.
Yeah.
That, that was quite a long mainline extension.
Right.
If I'm not mistaken either.
And we, and we did make a concession there, if I recall, right? So I, I would be open to, to talk about that. I, but. I don't want to water down those calculations and make this more complicated than it is.
No, I understand that position too. I, I get it. That's fine.
He would not be required to pay a mainline. Well, I guess there would be because it'd be an easement.
Well, and we have the authority to require a certain.
No, he wouldn't, because we're asking for it as a loop, as a loop. So.
So we can, we can figure it out, down, down the line, as long as everybody, you know, is thinking about it anyway. Um, I mean, really, I'm, I'm just here for the, uh, the high bay and the apartments at this point. And, and you know, we can, we've got, we've got a ways to go for the rest of the site. So if, if there's something that, uh, you know, Tom and the board and, uh, Ron, if you're all willing to, you know, sit on it, think about it. Forward, back in on, on another project, but that's fine with me. I just wanted to put it out there and put it in everybody's head for a bit.
Yeah, I mean, you said maybe you're putting in more water line than you really need and it's a 12 inch line and all that, but is that. How does that reconcile with, you know, the fire flow demands and things? Is that? The 1,500 gallon a minute fire demands out here? I mean, obviously, you know, it's, uh, the future industrial. Uh, developments that you're doing, you're kind of planting the seeds for that sort of in the future right now, aren't you?
So the actual, the actual fire flows, so again, the fire flows were another thing that was assumed number of 1,500 gallons a day. The actual fire flows, I want to say they're between either 750 and 850. Uh, somewhere in that, but I had emailed that to you a while back, Tom. I don't have that email with me, but. Uh, it was under 900 gallons, uh, it wasn't 1,500. Um, as for, uh. Industrial type buildings or commercial buildings, uh, you know, you guys saw the plans. We're doing a couple of, a three, one story. Uh, sprinkler buildings, uh, up on DW highway. We don't really have a game plan for what's behind St. Obane at this point. You know, we're looking at a couple of different options. There might be a handful of 250,000 square foot big warehouses. It could be one huge warehouse. We're kind of playing with that a little bit at this point. Uh, but right now the biggest building that we're going to have is that 120,000 square foot high bay. At this point, yeah.
So I'm looking here and it's talking about 1,500 gallons a minute for fire, uh, fire pressure flow.
Yeah, I don't know. Tom might be able to speak on that a little bit. Again, that wasn't assumed number before, because we didn't actually have a fire. We didn't have a building, so we didn't actually have a fire flow.
Right, yeah. I think we assumed that before we had a fire flow from you and I.
Yep.
Camera, I may have updated the letter to note the fire flow that, that you actually provided, but still as a policy, we like to. To be conservatively use that, use that number, because that's usually the minimum fire flow if. For a, um, you know, if usually more, more, even a more residential area, and they can be much higher if you were into some heavy. Commercial stuff, so, um, i- regardless, you know, hydraulically it works, it, you know.
Yeah, yep.
It's really, it's really not going to change anything.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright. Okay, so are we, um, looking for us to make a motion to approve this tonight? So what would we be, um, a bunch of numbers floating around in here?
It would, it would really be the flows for the two apartment buildings. And the flows for the, uh, high bay warehouse on the north end of, uh, St. Obane. Remember I came in for all three of those the last time. And, uh, you gave us the, you okay for the flex space. Um, I'm just looking for the other two. The numbers haven't changed. We, we, we've just agreed to that, so. And that, that's it for this, this run. Although, you know, I did want to also say, you, you guys were talking about the, all the members of the board, we're, we're talking about, um. Wanting to put certain things in the development agreement. So I'm, I'm really dying to get going on, on the development agreement. I know you guys may still have some stuff to work through and that's fine. I did talk to Ron. For a bit this afternoon. But if anything, any thoughts have come up on the development agreement or what should go in a development agreement? You know, if you've got something, if I can get it sent to me, that's fine. If you're still trying to make decisions on stuff. That's fine. If you could let me, you know, let me know what, what, I'm trying to look for the status of where everything stands before I can. Modify or, or do a, a new development agreement.
Yeah, I don't think we have that development agreement in front of us right now, but.
So typically what would go into what we're asking for. In the review. And maybe we. Specify on the loop itself, but other than that, it's, it's pretty much what's in this, what we're looking for. This is a unique, the only other place that actually has a development agreement is the MPO site. Typically we don't do.
Yeah.
Do that. It's, this one was, I think it was mainly because of the loop going through the, the property we asked for, so.
Although this process is what we've been looking for as far as, uh. Staying in control of, of the growth in town and being prepared for it.
Right.
So I think in general, this process is necessary, specifically with larger developments like this. So whether or not that leads to a, to a development agreement or not, I'm not sure if I'm, that's much to me.
Yeah, yeah.
But the review and approval in itself, right? I think it's kind of what we were looking for.
Yes.
And that may or may not be, that may not be to go through the board in the future in all detail like we did this time, but. In general, I think that if.
I, I would be comfortable with the larger projects.
Yeah.
I, I see that, but you know, the, you know, a 15 hour service or something like that, that may not have to.
Okay. All right. So what's the motion then?
So I think the motion could be just to approve the. May 12th, uh. View letter.
Right.
As an addition to development.
Yeah. Which is basically the, uh, design average use of 18,339 gallons per day. And that's apartments, one, two, plus the flex buildings, plus the high bay. As it is in table eight here, right?
Yes.
And the system development charge on that is 83,442. So that's what we're, that's part of the motion, I guess, to be specific.
Yep. That will get, um, Kevin, think it start or, because this, this is really kind of what's holding you up.
Provide that to the planning board, right?
Yeah, it covers all the sites. He, yeah, we can work on the development agreement. As we go.
Okay.
And all that.
Right.
Yeah, prior to. Yeah, prior to C E O, however you guys wanna do it, it's fine with me.
Yeah, make it contingent on getting the development agreement squared away before any.
We have a sign off process, uh. We are a part of the sign off process for the C E O, so they, okay, without our signature on it, he would not be able to to get it, so.
So moved.
Okay. Second. So that motion made by Wolf, second by John. Any other questions, discussion on it? Not, will I obtain a vote? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, we'll do roll call, Ken Ayers, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Paul?
Yeah, I probably should have said at the beginning of the conversation, but since I chair the, where Flatley is in front of the planning board, I'll be uh abstaining from any conversations with this.
Okay, understood. So uh, that motion passes four zero one with Paul McLaughlin being the abstaining vote. No vote.
Great, thank you, thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Kevin, appreciate it.
Alright, have a good night, everyone.
You too, okay.
Before we move on, a quick comment. I don't recall if we ever finalized the discussion as far as the system development charge needing to be based on peak. Capacity versus average capacity. And I think we need to finalize that discussion, obviously, we're past that point, you know, it wouldn't be fair by any means to to bring that up, bring that into the equation now. But in general, I think. We have recognized a couple of months ago that our system, as you said earlier, in the end, needs to be designed for peak flow, and peak flow is not the six A M. Go to the bathroom and cool, cool coffee, right, or boil coffee uh of demand, it's the uh, May, June, July. Fill the pool, take a shower, wash the car, and. Here he gave my lawn, peak demand, right, so it's 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 a matter of a few days in a row. Hot days, dry days, right, that's the peak demand, right, not 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 the minute. Peak demand in the morning. Uh, at lunchtime, so. We really need to talk about that and probably with legal as well, can we make a change like that overnight? Because it changes the precedent or the, you know, the precedence is different in the past. But you would assume that we can change our bylaws as we see fit to adapt to the situation, but I do think we need to have that discussion and finalize it.
So Underwood did revise their um in the tables in the availability of water. We're we're using a peaking factor in there. One point five on on the availability of water, that that's for the whole system. It's not being applied to each individual.
Right.
Uh, site.
You know, and I don't wanna blow this meeting, Keith, and maybe an agenda item for the next meeting or for the next work session. Can we please have a look at that, what is the current system development charge based on, is it average or is it peak? Do we need to make a change? We need to have a conversation with legal?
What you're saying, we covered, it's kind of covered though, right, with the.
Um, I don't know, well, it didn't affect the the four fifty-five is the same number.
Right.
That didn't change.
Right.
But we can, we definitely, we can have an agenda.
Yeah, so I think in in this case. If his numbers that he's, that he was presenting included irrigation. They're just not a high irrigation user, so um, it doesn't bother me as much, but. There are some developments that, you know, if there if there's some division going in with single family homes. And they're big lots, big houses, you gotta assume they're probably gonna have in-ground irrigation systems.
And a pole.
Right, so that's probably a project that we gotta look closer at. Not just the average design, we have to also factor irrigation in for that, I think. And maybe we do that. As um, instead of just looking at. Per bedroom on a house like that. Maybe we also add in and assume the irrigation. And I don't know how we can. To determine if the if the ultimate user is gonna be using irrigation or not, but. You kind of have to go by convention where. A lot of them are, and that's where I think the higher. We have to have a multiplier in there, add a number for irrigation, and then and then multiply that by the system development charge. Might be kind of overcounting.
Just kind of a thought here, the S T C is written technically to bring you up equal to what's. Out in the system. The existing user.
So maybe it gets applied.
So. And I'm just kind of throwing it, so the, I don't have irrigation in my house. I wouldn't necessarily need a permit or anything, I could go put irrigation in, and it's not gonna cost me any more money.
Right.
And that's, it would only change if I increase my service size.
Right.
So how does that factor, it may just, I'm just kind of.
I know, this is kind of a, there's a missing piece there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess that's where you're.
Right.
That's where you're going.
Maybe, again, it should probably be something we postpone, otherwise we can spend two hours on the subject, but I think.
We have. Get his last word.
I'm sorry, Tom.
No, that was me, but I I think, I think if you want to have this discussion, we wanna start just by. What the goals and what the issues are, um, because, you know, the cost of service study, we can do it with peak, we can do it with max, we can do it with average. But it's it's all, I I I think we need to understand what it is that you, we we need to. Solve before we we go there, and so maybe that's the first conversation is, okay, what are the issues, and then let's see if we can fix it with the S T C. Because what I'm hearing, I'm not sure will get fixed with the S T C, if we go to max day, then everything's just, you know, changed proportionally, but. I agree with you, Wolf, let's um, let's find a slot to have some conversations on how to best do that going forward.
Would the, would the, would prefer a work session or an agenda?
I, I would, I like the work sessions, we can focus on one thing if you guys want to.
Well, so, action item forty-seven is kind of really that, right, so this is not really a new discussion anyway. Um, review S T C calculation metrics to include escalation due to irrigation, that is, cost of service, right? And that was supposed to be included in the last work session, which I think we missed.
Right.
So.
You're right.
And I, and frankly, this is not something we have to discuss this month or next, right, because this is a long-term discussion. So we can factor that into a future meeting or a work session.
Right.
Maybe. You know, I don't know what work sessions we, we can put it, we have it as an agenda item, maybe let's add, well, it's already says. So.
We could throw some dates, I I'm trying to begin. Probably should have a certain language, just because of this other stuff coming in, we wanna. Probably nail it down.
Yeah.
For. For too long.
Yeah, this this definitely, in my mind, is a disconnect between. We need all of our sources up and running to meet. Met, you know, peak demands, we'll call that summer demands. But in the system development charge is based on all of those sources. Providing water in the system. And the equity buy-in for those sources that exist and the distribution of the water. But yet we're basing all of our system development charge on average numbers, so. It it, I don't know, it seems like it's not capturing the users that use peak flow. You know, and here's a classic example.
May use peak flow down the road.
May use peak flow, yeah. So, you know, let's say Flatley wants to all of a sudden put in tons of irrigation everywhere. Do they need to come back to us for that, not if they're, if they're not increasing the size of their service connection?
That, right.
They don't.
Technically, they wouldn't have to.
Yeah. And what could we do about it? As long as they're not using double the. Their average allotment. Then, and I and I thought that number was gonna be reduced to fifty percent, I thought that's what came out of the last um. Work session we had was, we're gonna use a peaking factor of one point five, because I think in the agreement I was reading, we promised them. Eighteen thousand gallons of average and up to thirty-six thousand peak. And I said, well, hold on a minute, shouldn't we be doing the fifty percent and knock that down to? You know, whatever, fifty percent, twenty-seven thousand or whatever that is of um.
Yeah, and it was what, eighty, eighty-five percent of peak or something like that, okay.
Yeah, I I just, I I'm not comfortable giving someone the allowance to use double their average. That's, it kind of all kind of ties into that, I guess, we can, we can. Kind of limit the irrigation on that end as well. But. Um, we should be looking at some kind of other metric to be able to tie in. And and maybe fifty percent is what we use, you know, I thought, but that's what we discussed at our um. Work session, couple, few weeks ago, whenever that was, is that fifty percent number, at least on the agreement where.
Peak, the peak factor.
Yeah, I think that was gonna be changed to one point five.
Right.
Alright, so we have an agenda item, so let's keep that on our radar for the next work session, whenever that might be.
Right, okay. Is everybody good on that?
Yep.
You just, are you targeting a couple, few months out, maybe for something like that, just wanna put it in my notes? Yeah, I wanna, what do you guys uh?
We need a list of things, really, what we need to talk about in the next work session, so, I'm not sure if we have that right now.
Alright, well, we'll keep it on our radar, anyway. Okay. Anything else from us? Um, what we got next here is just the um. Minutes and stuff, right, I don't think there's anything else. Is there, are there any um action items for um, for Underwood on there, while you've um got that in front of you? You just don't find that. We got a list of action items, and some, sometimes they involve you guys on there, so I uh.
Yeah, sure.
Well, just wanna make sure.
Hopefully, we've checked off a couple over the few months.
Where's that in the packet here?
Right after the minutes.
Wait, I see it. So let's just going down here, anything assigned to um Underwood going here? Number forty-seven, which you just mentioned, so um. The only other one was the um. Number four, action item number forty-nine, work session regarding corrosion control and chemical feed. Um, well, we had.
Fifty-three, actually.
We just had the work session, which did include corrosion control.
Yeah, you should be able to check off forty-nine.
Yeah.
Well, not quite, because there were a couple of things that were uncovered, if you recall at the end of it. About, you know, chlorinate, remote chlorination, and then uh.
I think we agreed to put all of our wells online once they're treated and see.
That's true.
If the residual is maintained better.
Well, corrosion was an issue, though. We we had talked about. That it's missing a little bit, the. The actual. You know, assessment of of the current corrosion levels in the system, if you recall, I kind of pointed that out, that I was missing that a little bit.
Are you talking about like tuberculosis in the pipes, like the? The crusting of the insides of the pipes?
I'm talking about that we have customers complain about corrosive. And 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 other solids in the pipe ending up in their homes. And that has to come from somewhere. Right, so my understanding of the corrosion study was that. To one point or another, we get some feedback about what is the state of our system. And is there any, any areas of concerns we might, similar to the the asset management plan, right? Um, is there any areas that we maybe need to think about proactively replacing over the coming years, right? Because, again, we maybe have more concerns down the road from one line, right, down downstream, one line. How do we capture that, right, and 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 how do we? Not get blindsided by. A deteriorating line, right, is is there a way for us to inspect them on a frequent basis, for example? Now, uh, are we doing this today, I don't know, right? Are we running a camera part down the line that tells us, you know, this line has all kinds of. Pitting going on and 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 flaking going on, that 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 validates that complaint that customers have, right? But that's kind of what I think, I thought I had expressed that I was looking for as far as corrosion control. Um, which I really didn't see covered in that study at all.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't even think that was in the scope of work for that particular.
I thought it was, but um maybe I was reading something I wanted to to read into it.
I'm just trying to, so we wanna leave it on here for future discussion?
It could be another, you know, action item on the work session or something to talk about that part a little bit.
Yeah.
And maybe. One thing we, we talked about was that, is that um. Uh, recommended, you know, continuing to monitor and document where you may have complaints.
Right.
And and because you really need more information to really assess that in detail and confirm it's a problem, and also get your. Get your treatment plants all back online, and then we can start to differentiate between some of the effects of the different treatment plants and sources. Between that and what may be going on in the distribution system. And then, and then you could really see if there's, if 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 there's things in the distribution system that. Are causing these complaints versus versus changes in treatment. So a lot, a lot of things been going on and, and without, you know, really, really definite information there. It's, it's hard to make specific um, specific recommendations with regard to corrosion in the, in the distribution. So, so the, so the report primarily focused on the uh, on the treatment. Um. Um, corrosion control treatment at the, at the sources. Um, but uh, but we did have a, we did have, make some remarks about, about potential, you know, cut. Things that could be happening in the system too, customers can can complain about different things, and sometimes it's corrosion, sometimes it's just. It's just particles and, you know, flushing that needs to be there, so. I think it's, it's continued monitoring, and as you, as you get your treatment plants back online, it's gonna be the, be the key here.
Well, I I agree with you partially as far as the um chlorine complaints, right? We have noted that there's a lot of variables going on right now, and it's hard to dial everything in perfectly, because we're constantly shifting the. The the constellation of the water source, right, and 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 the ratio of the water source, so. Um, that part I agree with, I'm not sure if I agree with that from a. Perceived. You know, uh, solid. Floating down the, down the line standpoint. Um, I I can see that, you know, as turning on a certain pump of, or turning off certain, some, some pump may cause some. Some dislodging, right, of 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 whatever sediments we have built up in the line. But, but again, for me, for corrosion control was also. Understanding how bad is the system, do we have, do we know how bad the system is, right, or how good is the system? I don't, I don't wanna be negative, but do we, do we even know? How good the lines are, or do we just flush them basically and see what happens, right?
So, uh, flow tests throughout. It will tell us how clean our lines are, most of our pipe is either, it's either a combination of A C. Plastic, uh, a ductile iron lined or a plastic which would generally not. Shouldn't have any tuberculosis, there are some iron pipe, uh, iron. Pipe out in the system. There are some areas that we do know that there is, you know, railroad avenue is one that that is closing up, but. Um, to the point of sedimentation, why we haven't been able, with what we've been going through with the treatment plants and. Um, drought, something else, we have not been able to get a good flush in.
Hmm.
Um. I think going forward, with the closing down of well three, which is a dirtier well that we would have needed to have, I would have needed to treatment on. That's gonna be taken out of the equation, and we're gonna gain a well, well nine, similar. Qualities to well two. I do see that sedimentation issues. Once we can get a good flush in and continue flushing, and we've eliminated that iron source, I do see that getting better.
Well, and again, I don't wanna blow this meeting out, you know, without a warning, so, let's, let's maybe, again, keep. Maybe we can just make a notion that I personally feel that the actual. Current state of corrosion, right, and how it affects the water quality, I don't see really covered in the study that we have done so far. That's, that's not what I've seen in there. Um, just even the breakdown of which line specifically, in what area of town are iron, right? Which ones are lined and we expect the liner to be in good shape? I don't know that, right, which, which one? Can't we see any corrosion, right, because of the the design of the pipe and the material that we're using? Uh, which area can we see? And does it const, you know, does it correlate with the complaints? I don't see anything out there that makes us start learning that from now on, right? So, for example, I don't know, do you guys have a process in place, going through those complaints once every quarter and mapping them, right? And see how that ties together with the, with the makeup of the distribution system, I don't know if you do that or not, right? So I just see, I I don't really see us making any progress at all in getting that data that Tom is rightfully asking for, because the complaints come in. Right, and they maybe run through some process up here, because you guys know the system, but. I don't know if that's really true, or is there a formal process where we compare it with other data that we start collecting, for example? What is the makeup of our system, where are pipe types that we could be concerned about, just because of the nature of.
And we do have that, and we, and we kind of know, that's where I, like I said, you know, it's typically the older. Sections in town. The iron pipe. In that area.
So maybe, maybe in a future meeting, without wanting to go any further, maybe we can talk about that a little bit more, and and it can be prepared. So.
Absolutely, so, and one of my, one quick thing is, what are we able to do? So I've been, I'm gonna be working with the fire department as far as working on I S L ratings. So we'll be probably do some fire flows, that might be a good time that we could actually. Uh, maybe, you know, wear it out, we can test the C factor and see what, you know. which will tell us, you know, that size pipes exactly what it's closing up, what we, what we should be getting out of that. You know, what we're actually getting. So that might be definitely a good time to probably.
So I think there's two different things we're talking about here. It's tuberculation, which is the pipes getting smaller. And then it's corrosion where the pipes are wearing out in the, the acidity or the low pH or something's causing pitting in the pipes in. Is it thinning the wall of the pipe? That's kind of sounds like what you're at.
I think I'm looking for both really. I'm looking for.
I was thinking more of the sediment in the pipe is what you were looking. Talking about.
Better, like I said. Of our, our pipe breaks and we kind of talked about it before, uh, when Kristen was here, but um, you know, to look at the pipe that breaks and look at it. Did it break because the wall was thin? Or was there a separate reason? Have, have we had any breaks that are as a result of the pipe itself being corroded through from the inside? That corrode through so to the point where, you know, ends up creating a big leak? You know, that would tell us if we're seeing that, if, i- i- in the pipe breaks that do occur, if we take a section of that pipe, look, cut pieces of that pipe and look for corrosion from the inside, thinning the wall. You know, that, that's something we could look at.
Definitely.
I wouldn't recommend doing test bits and cutting into pipes just to look at them. You know, but, but when we have a pipe break, the piece that we remove before we throw it away, maybe we cut that up and kind of look at it.
I mean, we do. I mean, a lot of.
All right, that's, that's kind of what I'm wondering.
Batman one.
All right, John's gonna go. We're gonna move on.
And we, so yes, we have a water main break. We do look at the pipe. Sometimes it's a little bit difficult to see, you know, a lot of it's the AC pipe that is shifting or breaking or if there was a, a small leak to begin with, that usually works into a larger leak over time. And, and some occasions it's around an opening or something that or a shift.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can we maybe add another new action item on top of the forty nine that basically suggests that, you know, between Underwood and staff that, I mean, we talked about this now for ten minutes and I think there's quite a bit of content in the last ten minutes. It's on record, right? So.
Yeah.
It may help you a little bit. And maybe I'm alone with this request. I don't know what you guys think. I mean, so something we want to do? Do you, you guys agree with that discussion or do you, you know, are you like?
Max, if, from my point of view, I wasn't looking at what you, when we talked about it in the, uh, the other work session. I was thinking more of a sediment or a tuberculation type thing. I wasn't considering the pity.
I'm looking at anything that couldn't, that can cause a customer to experience water that they perceive unsanitary, whether it is, doesn't matter in that point. I mean, it is unsanitary, unsanitary because nobody's going to drink brown water, right? So I'm looking for reasons why that happens. And what are we doing about not allowing this to happen, right? So, and there can be all of the above.
So corrosion could be chlorites, pH. You know, e- e- even though you're not getting lead and copper detections, doesn't mean you're not getting some corrosion occurring. But um, yeah, we, we can. If you want to wait till we get to the action items.
Yep.
That's what, to add that, we can. All right, I think we're, uh, we're good, guys. I just, what was action item fifty three? You started to say, I just want to make sure if that one also applies to us. So I got forty seven, forty nine and fifty three. Does that apply to us or no?
Set up the testing facility for RSSCTs at Wells four and five.
Okay, that's still, yep, that's still in process. So I'll make it. Yeah, we had a bunch of information in the packet. I, I would also want to say, I don't think we should have information in the packet that's not on the agenda. If it's in the packet, it should be on the agenda. Cause there's a whole bunch of information in this packet that we're not even going to talk about right now. So I don't know what's the point of it, just for informational purposes, I guess.
Well.
But no one looks at it. So.
Well, no, that was something you were asking, you, you were asking to report. So we put it into the packet.
It's not that. It was all of the graphs of the breakthrough and all the other, none of that's on the agenda. But there's a whole bunch of stuff in the packet here. Right? So. Right, but whatever. Let's move on. We only got so much time in a day. Thanks, guys.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Um, where are we now? Minutes. So we got minutes from April eighteen, twenty twenty two. Regular board commissioners meeting and the non-public meetings. Meetings? Oh, the, the non-public and public meetings. Uh, anybody have any um, well, let's, uh, let's take the, uh, non, the public meeting first, April eighteenth. Any, uh, questions or edits to suggest? I don't have anything. Doesn't look like anyone's running to the door. Uh, how about the non-public meeting? Doesn't look like it. So let's somebody make a motion to approve both of these minutes as printed. Uh, the non-public and public section of April eighteen, twenty twenty two.
So moved.
Motion by Ken, second by Ken. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, Ken, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Paul?
I vote aye.
Great, thanks. That's five zero zero, no oppositions or extensions. Um, so that brings us back to action items. All right, so um, I think a lot of these are just kind of ongoing. Number two, number twenty three. Um, decision criteria, number thirty seven, I think, um, Underwood is, is going to move forward on that with the source evaluation they're doing.
I think we can declare that complete because it's in the ESR. I'd be fine with closing that out.
Closing number thirty seven out?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, that's a good point. All right, you guys are in favor of that. Number thirty seven off, you got that, Amanda? Um, noise complaints about the Turkey Hill booster station. Still waiting on that.
Sorry, actually did touch base. We, we've been back and forth and I do want, we try to set up a meeting that I can, uh, go out there with her and, uh, or them. We kind of go over some things. We did hire a contractor to finish up stuff that, you know, the, the skirting around the outside that can minimal complete, so.
All right, so you got to be a site visit to see, it seems, sounds like it's on, as they start opening their windows in summertime, you're probably going to be more be able to tell if it's noisy or not at night. Um, okay, forty, uh, looks like we were talking about an open house at a treatment plant. I think we had tabled that. What do we, um, I just kind of keep that hanging out there. It's this check mark for, what's that for? Revisit.
Forty one, I think is complete too, because we just went through that process and I think we were satisfied with it.
Yeah.
I would declare that as complete.
Yeah. I agree with that.
If that's what we're doing in the future, I'm okay with that. That's.
Right.
And that's the, um, process, reviewing the process of water allocation requests from the planning board and our ability to monitor it.
All right. Everybody good with that? Would take forty one off the, um, action items?
Yep.
Forty three, I think you're still trying to put something together, Ron?
Yep.
All right.
You have the, uh, spot channel two.
All right, uh, number forty four, I think that's kind of a wait and see as far as I understand it.
Yeah, I, I was gonna ask you. Did we? I almost want to say that we took it off. We didn't see the need or did we want to leave it there and?
I was thinking of taking it off because, you know, let's, I, I was kind of more a wait and see approach.
Okay, I'm finding the way. I just, I thought that was kind of where we left it at the last week, but or to, that we could take it off, but I don't, I couldn't recall.
I mean, I would, I would. I would say take it off because I, I would, I would offer to promote any company who's voluntarily going to be doing things, but let's wait until they actually do something. So to keep this on here, we're just going to wait for another year for it to prove itself. So I'd say let's just remove it. It's, if I had my preference. So everybody agree with that? We can remove number forty four. Do that, okay. Uh, forty five, gain understanding, permitted threshold, thought that we for Wells four and five. I think Jill had an email of that or something or somebody.
Yeah, we did. We went over that. Uh, four is, it is permanent for eight seven, eight seventy four, I believe. Four is limited to what we can over pump. I know that was another question. You had had not over pumped this product though. The correct.
So it's approved for eight seventy, but it, it may only sustain six twenty five on a long-term basis or something, depending on the recharge in the aquifer, right?
Correct. I mean, we, and I know you, you'd asked if we can pump that more than what it's approved for, for short periods for if we need the water, which we can't. So we could on five because there's no limit to five. Four has a limit. But we also need to keep in, keep in mind that the plant is only designed for eight seventy, so.
Right.
Right. I wouldn't want to do more than that like this.
All right, so um.
Set thresholds on the SCADA system that remind us of those maximums? Like with the SCADA system screen, if we're exceeding the eight seventy?
Well, there is, yeah, um, we would need to know what the, the permanent levels are permitted.
On a daily basis, right?
Yeah, because I mean, it does show what our, our GPM is. So I know I can, anytime I can look at the screen and say, well, yeah, we're at four, five hundred gallons minute, well, four or five, but.
All right, I guess we can leave that on there if we still get, I don't know, what do you guys want to do? Doesn't matter to me. All right.
I'd like to take, talk maybe at another time. How do we, how do we ensure that people know what the limits are, you know, and what the capacities are for the different systems and, and ensure that we don't pump everything we have into one plant, you know? Well, I'm curious about that.
I mean, I, you know, Brian is aware, I think, but they don't typically make big adjustments that I wouldn't know about.
Right. What if you're not here, right? How do, how does the next person know what not to do? Right? So might be interesting discussion.
Yep.
Yeah, all right, let's leave that there. So forty six, future event policy. I think that's still in development.
Yeah, let's talk about that some other time because that email from Carrie, that didn't make sense to me because we know these events are coming. Unless we categorically say in the future, we don't allow events, period. So I think that's a discussion we need to have, but that's probably discussion with legal.
Um. Was there supposed to be a hard copy of something?
Yep, that was the second email that was in the.
But we're not talking about that though anyways, right?
No, we're not.
All right, I'll pick that up. Um, so forty six stays on forty seven, SDC calculation metrics that obviously is going to stay on, I think. Uh, we could probably change number forty seven to just say to be included in a future work session. Right?
Yep.
You can take the four twenty six off of that, Amanda. Uh, number forty nine, work session regarding corrosion control. Let's, we're back to this. Why don't we leave that on?
Well, we can close this one out because we said we're on it specifically, right? Well, we can leave it on because we said we're going to review it once, once the other wells are back online.
Yeah, great. All right, so we'll keep that one. Uh, number fifty two, we're still, we're still waiting for some results from Brandon. We got, didn't you like send them a duplicate and we got some results back, but not the others?
They didn't, EPA has got their results.
Yeah. So we're still waiting on that, right?
As far as we know, I haven't, I haven't.
Right. All right, so let's keep that on there just in case we, when we do get them, if they're, we want to have more discussion of that or something. Uh, RSSCT wells four and five, wasn't there something in this packet about that?
Just the work plan.
Got a work plan that, that we've received from them.
All right. And maybe we should have them like talk and present that to us.
Yeah.
I had a few questions on it.
Yeah, and I'm kind of lost on that. Is that, is that Lou Niles? Or is it, no, that's, that's not zeolite or anything, right?
So we, we'd asked them to for, but part of the thought was to have, be able to do our own column testing at four and five. So this was to move that forward to get, to get some, something designed. So that we could have, you know.
Right.
But we could use that for different types of media in the future too, right?
And my thought, I mean, I know Donald's thinking of some resins possible.
Right, right.
The, if we decide to move forward or, or.
I would like to try the zeolite, just to test it and see how it, you know, it's got to claim the fame that we've heard all along or not. And that wasn't covered in there either. So in, in the thing I was in our packet, it talked about GAC and some other stuff that I wasn't aware of, but no resins, no zeolite. So that was one of the comments is I think we might want to evaluate that. So are they moving forward with this without us approving this step? That's why I think we need to talk about it.
We do. We do talk, because I, I want to know what the next step would be.
Cause they'd be charging along with something that I wasn't on board with and I don't.
Right.
Personally, I don't want that to happen.
Our, our, I think original charge was just to get, to get it to be half.
Right. So can you touch base with Lynette and just find out? Tell them like what we'd like now is to have them come and discuss with us this proposal or what they're planning on doing before they actually do it? Cause I just don't want them to get too far along. I, you know, just putting it in the packet doesn't necessarily mean you spend the time to digest all of it. It held us having the professionals present everything to us, right? So we can understand, have a dialogue of questions. So let's put that on the agenda for the next, um, meeting, I think. Um, to have someone present it from Underwood and hopefully Lynette, because it seems like she was involved with it, I think. Okay, uh, so we were, uh, we're on number three thousand four hundred twenty one. Fifty four. Number fifty four. Uh, I think that can go away. That is what it is, right? The, the fixed charges are what they are. And we're satisfied with that, although we're not happy with it. But, um, so I think number fifty four can probably go away. All right, uh, number fifty five. Again, that was addressed somewhat a little bit today. Uh, I don't know if we included how the town handled it, but I'd like to keep that there if we still want to maybe give it a look over.
I think, I think we need to see how.
I don't think it's resolved, I think it was just kind of.
And see if we stick to the hundred percent or not, or if we change that. So I would like to leave that there.
Uh, number fifty six, uh, work session for new metrics on permitting based on peak consumption rather than average. Um, again, that can just be, um, discussed in a future work session. So you can take the four twenty six date off of that, Amanda. Uh, fifty seven, discuss monitoring overall versus permitted consumption. Um, I'm sure what.
Well, this was because we don't really know unless you guys are paying attention to it somehow in your billing system. If somebody exceeds the permitted.
Oh, yeah.
Quantity rate.
Wouldn't, unless it was an excessive amount.
Right.
That would flag us.
Right. And that was, that was the discussion to see, is this something we can achieve in a, with a different setup or? I mean, some of this stuff really should be leading to a new agenda item. All of this ties together to the same thing, really.
Yeah, it kind of does. So I think we want to keep it here.
Yeah, we do. But obviously not four twenty six, so.
No, so yeah, number fifty seven, probably want to just say, I guess, to be included in a future work session and take the four twenty six off of that. Uh, and then those, uh, those graphs are, um, just an, an ongoing item, so.
And I, I get every, I want to talk to Katie.
There was some, there was some updated graphs in here. Right?
Yeah.
Right.
Do you mind going back to number forty nine real quick? Um, Wolf, you had mentioned adding another action item and then you said anything that can cause a customer to receive unsanitary water.
Yeah, I was just about to said, I was just about to say that. So fifty nine is a new action item and that is basically on, how do we want to word that?
Oh, um.
It's in an evaluation, evaluation of, um, proactive measures to track and um, correlate. Um, correlate. Customer complaints, right? With. Possible sources of solids. Rosy solids, right? Or not, I mean, any, any solids, that's what it boils down to, right? How do, how do we gain data that tells us where do we need? Water quality complaints.
Is it more like graphically track water quality complaints? Because then you're kind of positioning them in the system where they.
We didn't have the ability, but more now with the software we can, they're, they're encoded. Or Kevin used to spread them in book.
Right, but it goes a little bit beyond that. It, it's also, you know, do we have ability to, to, to inspect, right? The most suspicious part of the system, right? Is the technology out there where we can, where we can investigate proactively? Should we be concerned about the iron pipe that we might, the oldest iron pipe or even any of them, right? Uh, do we know where they are, right? So I think this is, this is a, a bigger item we have to talk about in the work session.
So what do we, and we do know, um.
Amanda, I'll send you something, what to word that, like.
I think true.
Okay, thank you.
Want to hold a meeting up?
All right, be good with that.
It's, it's not a decision, right, or action or like a motion, so I can just, yeah, it's just an actual item. So I can say, I can formulate something.
All right, so that was fifty-nine. So yeah, add in that one on and we will facilitate that and, um. Think the agenda, what is it, is that next? Oh, no, I'm sorry, old business. Oh, that was where the additional information was coming in. I don't think anybody's got anything to.
Yes, go ahead. Any, any, uh. Those, the visiting.
Oh, uh, Brigadier Alder, Brigadier General Tom Alder. Um, I have a date offered to me, but I haven't had a chance yet to, to look at my calendar. So, um, I'll just email the two of you again. A date, um, and it's, it's really, there's no entourage, there's no press, there's nothing. It's, he wants to, um, learn. About our woes and understand what we're doing about it and what we've done so far about it. Just so he knows what, what he needs to support us with.
It's interesting taking a look at all everything or just?
It's really a problem with the plants, plants, then I don't think he, you know, he wants to tie up too, too much of our, of our time. It's really PFAS, I Manganese, uh, supplies.
Plant or just one?
Oh, oh, uh. I, I'd probably say either seven and eight or four and five, right? So.
Okay.
They had said four and five, I would probably suggest seven, eight, because he can see the whole.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, four and five is the bigger filtration plant, right? Then, so. I'll ask. Appreciate you asking.
All right, then we had an email from Lynette saying that PFOA is, um, through the seventy-five percent port of the lead vessel. Uh, it's about five months to break through each twenty-five percent port. And, uh, she's estimating that, um. So it'll probably break through the lead vessel, a hundred percent of the lead vessel at the end of August. I think we were planning on letting it leak into the lag vessel, something too, before we changed the lead vessel. And I looked, I remember just from the Wells four and five settlement agreement, that was what we were thinking of doing there is let it break through to some percentage of the X L or half or something. That's, that's sort of a common thing, but just kind of see what. Yeah. So this went online in October of twenty. Twenty? So that means we're probably gonna get about two years to break through. So it's kind of following pretty close to. What was expected, I think.
Couple of things are in our favorites, we're not using it.
Yeah.
Eight seventy.
Right. That's true, that's a good point. All right, um. And these graphs are pretty interesting.
Right, so I am, actually, I do have a meeting with, uh. Peter and Lynette tomorrow and Brian as well to start kind of going over the four and five change up, just to kind of get ahead of it and.
Good.
So.
All right, um. So I guess the other is, um, new business?
I have a quick one. I really like this table. PFAS results into distribution system. I thought this is super informative. And I think we need to do something about that for our customers. Because this table, for anybody that spends two minutes looking at it, it makes it clear that the mix of filtered. M D water that only has, you know, the short chains breaking through right now, right? Combined with penny check water that only has some remaining PFOA.
Yeah.
But below the, the limit. This is the kind of image that of a customer. I don't know if, I know you're not on Facebook, but, uh, and you really shouldn't be. You really shouldn't be. It's so painful. But I mean, so many people are just confused about what's going on right now. Where are we really in town?
We shouldn't mess Facebook either. We shouldn't manage the face.
No, we shouldn't.
It's a very small part of population in Merrimack.
Yeah, but a lot of people are reading and a lot of people are caring about it.
Six thousand on that.
Right, right, right. But.
Not for Merrimack either.
So we have on our website.
Manage more to business practices.
No, I agree.
The people who are squeaky wheels on Facebook.
Well, yes and no. I, I do think that there's a lot of people out there that, specifically on Facebook, that are looking for answers on PFAS and water quality. Uh, there's a reason why. It comes up frequently, right? But it probably would come up less frequently if we're addressing this more frequently as well, right?
Um, so something to point to.
Yes, right. And we do, we have the website and everything, but. And again, we can spend another hour and I don't want to. Maybe you guys can think about how can we make this information accessible on a more frequent basis, right? And explain it too, right? I'm not sure if another mailer is a good idea because we all know that they don't always get read either, right? And I know the, having a detachment on the. I don't know, we have to think about, but when I looked at this, I was like, okay, this all makes total sense to me. Because it shows exactly that certain areas of town are getting more penny check water, certain areas of town are getting more, uh, four, five water, right? It explains that four, five has residual, um, you know, short change, P F B A's, P F H, P F H X S, X A, whatever, one of the two. Um, it shows how the penny check customers were, not, not penny check, those customers that receive primarily, um, penny check water are only seeing PFOA. That makes total sense to me. It's very explainable. And I think would make, it would be good because people are asking different answer found, what am I having, right? Do I still need to know our own syst, our own system? Do I, don't, still need a, uh, G A C system? I think would, would be good to use that information as transparent as it is and as much sense as it makes to explain that a little bit.
The only issue with that is that the water changes all the time.
Sure, that's why I'm saying do it frequently.
It's gotta, gotta be noted when penny check with water is on, um, when well seven and eight, that's really hard to track.
Well, what the data is here month by month, so we can rely on that.
The wells fluctuate, this is what the data was at the time it was.
I was just gonna say, we could probably put something, it's a snapshot in time, right? It only represents the day that it was taken.
So let me ask you this, on the website, I know we have water quality testing for the wells. Do we have on there the distribution system?
That's not on there.
I was gonna say, I would definitely add this to the website.
I think just that table would be good. That you could point people to that.
Yep, exactly.
And say, this will answer your question with one.
With data, with hard data.
So maybe this is a way to add that table. And as that table grows with more readings over time, it'll paint more of a clear picture of everything.
Yeah, that was one question we, we'd always get is, you know, a lot of it was, what well am I on, right?
Right, exactly.
I've seen this good, same question asked like three, four weeks in a row. I hear the water is okay to drink, but is it, and this is what wells where and what, you know, it's like, look at that. That kind of would help them answer, so.
That's all I have, but I actually, do you want to do an action items on it? I, I don't want that quick, or?
Get it on, you can get it on the website or? Okay. Yep, um, the one, I went by the new, um, treatment plant, Wells two and nine yesterday and. It's amazing how large it is, but, um, it, there was lights on on the inside and there was, there's no doors, like.
But yeah.
People can just kind of go walk around in there and stuff. I just, I was wondering if it was secure enough.
We should say they're not supposed to be walking.
Is, is, uh.
That's why I think they leave the lights on right now, so.
Could see if someone was in there.
Yeah, you can actually see someone being.
All right, I was just a little surprised not to see it more secure, but maybe it's just not in that stage of construction yet.
Yes, we don't have.
The doors.
I mean, the doors, and I think door frames, but I don't think they have the doors. I can, I can ask tomorrow.
All right, no problem.
I don't believe they're in, but.
All right, superintendent's report.
Just a couple. Things, um, I did want to update, you know, we, we did turn on, which I know was mentioned earlier. The Penn Chuck interconnect, May eleventh. I'm sorry, no.
Well, two.
Uh, I'm jumping down the line. It was turned on last Tuesday. The demand was picking up, so we, we did fire, uh, the interconnect as well as get well two ready. Well, two, we did turn on over the weekend, um, it ran. Eleven hundred gallons a minute. Then we started getting some weather in and all of that, so we were able to turn off, well, two. Five o'clock yesterday and we actually shut off the Penn Chuck interconnect as well yesterday. We were getting into that where we, we were trying to get as much water into the tank as we could. We did some work coming up tomorrow and Wednesday over at well two. So, um, we would not have the ability to turn on well tubes. We're trying to maximize. That, um, so you, you run into the, everything running, we had to shut off well two and well, and interconnect because the tanks were getting close to overflow. And we don't want to treat your plant or well four and five shutting down. We play that game as well, so.
How long does that work at well two than it lasts, you know?
They, uh, should all, it should be back up and running, um. Just Monday, just Tuesday and Wednesday, the two days. It's just a good cutting in a wide pipe for the pipe that, the new plant pipe. Piping to be tying into the existing main.
There's no risk of supply chain issues stopping at work and stalling it for three weeks?
Uh, no, that, well. Being said, they dug it today. To get a kind of an O D of the pipe. We did, we thought we had the, um. Cup ones for it. It's, was actually the wrong I O D. Or it's larger, so it's A C pipe coming from well two. And so they gotta tie into that, so it's a transitional coupling. It's out of the O D range that we have. So the last I talked to Jean, he never did call me back, but. Did claim that E J Prescott had the correct O D. And, but they were in team, so I'm assuming that. If, if he didn't have them, to me, that work was off. And if it didn't happen tomorrow, it's not gonna happen till fall, so. I just, I don't want, as the summer rolls on, I don't want to shut, take the risk of shutting down for a couple of days. As demand picks up, so. All right, but it looks like it's gonna go, so. Find out tomorrow if it doesn't or not. And, uh, just one, a quick one, Kyle, so that the draft, um. So town salt policy is complete. We were supposed to get a copy and I was, I wanted to get it out to the board. I haven't got one yet, uh, but he is presenting. The salt policy, town council on the twenty-sixth. This week, next week. So hopefully it's still time to look at that.
So we don't know if it's got a list of streets in there like it had nineteen eighty-four.
I don't know. All of what's in there, he did mention to me quick, that's still kind of in there. So, and my understanding is. If it's, if it's a street that doesn't have public water, it's gonna be a no salt. If it has public water, uh, within the well protection area, it's gonna be a limited salt area. And, um, just a limited and the no salt. He's gonna utilize the signs. So we're gonna work in conjunction with what we put out and he's gonna have below our sign, you know, whether it's a no salt or a limited salt or.
Yeah, I'd still like to see a map of where the signs are gonna be and what they're gonna say.
Yeah, I did, I did.
Did you?
Yeah, I think you, I can give them again. I can put money, I mean, I have, so. I did throw that out there. We were.
I don't think you put, um, the pins on there as to where they, each, each side was gonna go.
I did. I flagged where, I check mark, I don't know if you remember, look at the map, there was check marks on the maps. Where we'd like to put signs, right? Obviously, we're not gonna get as many signs as. That we need on the map, so we'll probably have to go back and really look where we want to put them, put the signs, but.
All right. I'll have to go look at that. It was probably in March. Anyway.
I know, I'm not sure.
Again, this, I think it's something, it's gotta be on the agenda, because otherwise it's. In my opinion, it's like not having the data if it's not on the agenda. Cause.
I'm not, I'm not sure if I recall it either. That one, I'm not sure if I recall either, but, um.
I know you were, you were asking for it, so it was probably actually.
Well, I can check, it's, it's probably not like earlier than February. I do remember there was a map, I just don't remember that it had what I was looking for.
It was another question asked at the same time and it, it was asked about the maps and I sent those out, but if you don't have, just let me know. I have, I do have, I can send it home, I get.
All right.
That was something, it's, uh, super large. I know you, the, um.
Yeah, the well nine report.
The well nine report.
I did look at that briefly today. There's a lot in there.
There is, and, and. We would have been. The link expired.
Yeah.
The day you asked for it. It was, oh, so we couldn't send it anyways. She had to.
I knew when, yeah.
She said it was, so yeah.
Yep. No, I appreciate that. Yep, I got it. Okay. Um, is that, uh, superintendent report? That's, that's it?
Yes, I think it's pretty much, it's about the stuff, so.
All right, then, um, just questions of the press and public. I don't know that we see anybody on the, um, on the line. We check if someone's on the line. Be there, all right. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Next meeting is, uh, June twentieth.
So moved.
Motion by Wolf, second by. That's gonna. That was Paul. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Paul?
Vote aye.
All right, thanks, everybody. Have a good evening. We'll see you next.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, Amanda.